Good evening and welcome to the 10th meeting for the Milton Planning Board of Fiscal Year 2025. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order and begin by introducing the members of the board and our staff.
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Maggie Oldfield, Member.
Jim Davis, Member.
And Meredith Hall, serving as Chair. This evening, unfortunately Sean cannot be with us. And just to let the folks know and just to offer just our greatest sympathy and thoughts for Sean and his family, who lost his wife Janice early this morning due to pancreatic cancer. And we just, our hearts go out to that family and just know that we're thinking of you at this time. And now sort of introducing our staff.
Meredith?
Yes.
I can't tell if you guys started the meeting, but we can't hear you on this side, so muted.
Muted?
There we go, okay.
Can you hear it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna have to do that again.
Okay, and now to introduce our staff. Cheyenne?
Cheyenne Fraser, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development.
Julia?
Julia Gadsden-Cork.
And Tim will be joining us a little later. He had something he needed to attend. So he will be joining us, but just a little later this evening. And speaking of Tim, I did want to announce that sadly, we were given Tim's resignation this week. We will miss him greatly. He will gratefully be with us until November 22nd. So he will stay and hopefully if applications could come in soon enough, that there may be some overlap. But Tim had a great opportunity in the private sector and understandably, he's served this town very well. So it'll be sad to see him leave, so. But he will be joining us later this evening. So moving to our first item is the approval of our minutes. And did you have an edited set? I didn't see a new set come out.
I sent it last night.
Okay.
So I don't know if everyone had a chance to see it.
I saw them and I'm okay with them.
So that was the edited set from the 26th?
Correct.
Yep. I didn't read those yet.
Okay. So why don't we defer?
We can defer.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did not. We were getting a lot of things coming in, so we will approve those on the 26th.
There was another set in the folder, though.
Yes, the 16th.
16th, right?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that was September 16th, but they were August 16th.
They were mistdated, right.
So I made that change today, and those have not been approved, September 16th minutes.
Okay, so we'll have to do the 26th and the 16th at our next meeting.
Yeah, those I had reviewed previously. I was a little confused by that today, too, so I was looking back and forth. But I had reviewed those previously, so.
And I had looked through them, but I just.
Yeah, they were in the folder for two weeks.
Yeah, I had read those, but we'll just do everything at our next meeting, which leads us to our next meeting dates. That we currently have the 24th. And then the, just double check the October. October 24th is our next regularly scheduled meeting. We will be doing an MBTA forum and we'll be discussing that tonight, what date that will be. So following that, our next regularly scheduled meeting would be November 14th.
So should we talk about the 28th, which would be the normally scheduled meeting, but that's Thanksgiving? So should we?
We'll have to look at a date now, or? Yeah, we certainly can, or we can wait till Tim is here to ask him.
Well, if his last day is November 22nd, right?
Yeah, so we should do it.
I'm just wondering whether we should think about the 21st, just give Cheyenne a little more time and.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll suggest and ask if that works for folks. If we can, we'll do that on the 21st. I think that would be really nice. Okay, so we're gonna move on since we don't have Tim yet. Unless, Cheyenne, do you have an update that you wanted to provide? Did Tim give you?
No, he said he might have some updates when he gets here.
Okay, perfect. And so we can now then move to our citizen speak. And if there's anyone who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda, please, if you're in the audience, feel free to join us, or if you are on Zoom, you can raise your hand and introduce yourself and your name. And you can put your hand, raise your hand, so we can see if you'd like to speak. You seeing anyone, Cheyenne?
Nobody on Zoom.
Okay, all right. So moving forward, we are going to, now, we have a public hearing, but it's not scheduled till 7:10. So we can begin by hearing from our, on our presentation on Economic Development Planning Process from MAPC. And come. Join us at the table.
I just promoted Angela Brown from MAPC, and I believe Raj Kar should be in the audience.
Okay, great.
Oh, yes, is Gurdip Kar in the room? I believe she's attending.
Yes, she is. She's joining us at the table.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Angela.
She hasn't got it, but it's easy to find her.
Sure.
Oh, have you got it? Do you need to move?
You need an extension cord? I have one.
Do you?
I do.
Plug it in under here.
Yeah, they're taken. Oh, this is power strip.
There's a power strip, yeah. Yeah, can you see it there? Oh, thanks, Jill.
Second of each? Beautiful.
Yeah. So let's see. Cheyenne, as the host, can you allow screen sharing?
Yes.
Did you join the meeting? So if you join the meeting, Julia, do you have the meeting ID? You have that? Okay. Then I think if you join it there.
Share.
And share, but just have yourself muted there, or we'll get that echo. Yeah.
And I just wanted to say to the planning board, thank you so much for the opportunity to present some information, primarily on the process and approach that we propose to undertake the economic development study for the town of Milton. And you are joined in person by, in the person of Senior Economic Development Planner Gurdip Kar, who's loading up the materials as we speak, so just wanted to say a word of thanks.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Can we ask her to introduce herself? Is that necessary?
When she's ready, okay, yeah. Start sharing.
We're in webinar mode.
Yeah, you're in webinar mode, yeah. So can you promote her, Cheyenne, as a co-host, maybe? And then I think as a co-host or as a presenter.
Yeah, loading up.
One of those terms.
Should be good to go.
Technologies.
Okay, great. It looks like it is gonna work.
Good, good.
Terrific.
And if you want to get one of the microphones, too, just to be able to speak into, so everyone can hear you.
Testing.
Yeah.
Good.
Everybody see that? All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gurdip Kar. I am a Senior Economic Development Planner at MAPC. Thank you so much for allowing me to present tonight and for bringing on MAPC to help you guys achieve your vision for your town. We can, this is our general agenda. I'm hoping that this is less one-way presentation and more active discussion. Feel free to contribute whenever you feel like it. We can kick it off with some introductions. My team is made up of myself. I'll let Angela introduce herself and then Josh Fiallo, who's not joining tonight, but is also assisting and supporting, as always.
Right.
Angela, if you wanted to introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Angela Brown, and I'm Chief of Economic Development at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Economic Development Team works and partners with local municipalities on a variety of economic development-focused engagements. Many of them are either town-wide or priority site area planning initiatives to really consider what can go where in terms of commercial, industrial, and other economic activities in accordance with a good planning process and the community's vision and priorities. Thanks so much. I'll pass it back to Gurdip, because we do have some nice information to share.
So I think I will be able to hear everybody and hear every introduction, so we can tell if we skipped that or something.
Yep, yep.
All right, so.
If I push down it, mute it, the green is go.
I was thinking like in a radio station where the red light means.
Yeah.
So we are, there's two essential groups here, the core team and the key partners. The core team is us, staff, and the planning board here to guide this process along. And then the key partners are people we would bring in to do the additional community outreach, engagement, promoting surveys, and anything to that effect. Our responsibilities are, of course, to provide the technical expertise and data collection and analysis that you all are seeking. And we would like to work with you to coordinate an inclusive community engagement process. And eventually, we're going to leverage our findings to develop recommendations to propose to y'all and hopefully lead to an implementable plan for Milton. All right, so this is based on what we have from the project. And these are the goals of this planning process. There's five goals. Through this townwide economic development plan, the town of Milton would like to see a variety of things happen. So one is to enhance the mix of economic activities to better meet the community's needs, sustain the economic activities already here, maintain consistency with the town's physical scale of activities, expand the commercial and industrial tax base, and facilitate economic investment within the town's priority commercial, industrial, and mixed-use districts. And we'll discuss the four priority business districts we're going to be focusing on in this plan. I do want to highlight that we do need to balance some of these goals. As you all are smiling at me, I'm pretty sure you are wondering how are you going to do some things that might not seem as aligned? And that's where we're going to look to you for guidance on what do we move forward and what do we not? Because we want this to be an implementable plan. The four geographic areas that we will be focusing on is the East Milton Square District, Milton Village, the Central Avenue Business District, and the Northern Granite Avenue Business District.
Can I, just on that, on the districts, I think when Tim spoke to us about this, we were interested in, we have businesses that are pre-existing non-conforming in several locations. And I'm thinking along Randolph Ave, for example, the East Milton Business District, just outside of it, there's business uses. And within the residential, technically, a few in one of the larger buildings that are business use. So I'm wondering if we can capture that, those uses in this study? Or those locations, or how does that kind of tie in? I'm not sure, but I just want to alert you that we do have these things. These are, these businesses that do thrive and provide jobs and tax base, et cetera, to the town.
And that might fall under maintain.
Yeah, it may. I just want to alert you to it. And, you know, we can go into that at some point, but I'd raise it while we're talking about the geographic areas.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Gurdip, I could just chime in really quickly there. Gurdip has appropriately really lifted up the focus of this planning effort, which is really to think about the assets, the strengths, the trends as to these sort of concentrations of economic activity and what can happen there, maximize that. I think that the overall economic activity in the town will certainly show up in the data, so that will be a way to make sure that we're mindful of that and not over-saturating in one area or what have you. But I don't know that we're going down to any kind of parcel level of analysis in any of this planning. So I just want to give that caveat.
Thank you.
And then just an overview of the process. So like you mentioned, it would be first to identify the strengths, challenges, opportunities, and constraints. So I think non-conformities fall in that. Then moving on to understanding what the community's needs and priorities are. Having that really guide. The data can support a lot of good best practices, but it's really what the community wants to see happen. And gaining an understanding of that will have an extensive community engagement process. And then we will compile this, of course, into recommendations for your review. This is an overall timeline. The process looks about a little bit over a year long. And then, right now, we're in that existing conditions. That's what we called like the current stage, and then moving and shifting into the community engagement portion later in the winter. Okay, and now if we have, I have some questions. These questions will also be emailed out after, so if, because I just want to hear your thoughts. And we definitely don't need to get through all of these. I know we have a tight agenda. So if you all feel like contributing to answering some of these questions, what you feel is the strongest district, the liveliest district, where could we see some improvement? Thoughts?
What do you think of when you put the word strongest?
Right, so I distinguish strongest from liveliest, because sometimes there's a lot of quiet businesses that you may not notice that bring in a lot of revenue for the town.
So one thing I would say is like, I think one thing that might surprise people is extra space storage brings in a lot of tax revenue. And yet, it's not a lively use at all. And it's right in an area that we would expect lively use. So that's one thing I would say. And then the Granite, the North Granite Ave area, which is the office building, the largest commercial building we have in town, I would, I think. Again, it's on the perimeter and there's for lease signs out on it for quite a bit of that building. So how long, is that going to be the most viable use there? I guess it's a question that we've had with the office market changing the way it has since COVID. But those are probably the two largest business tax generators. So as far as others, I see some nodding from others.
I was gonna ask the same question, because we have retail, we have commercial, so, you know, on all aspects. You know, I think everyone thinks of for retail, the retail in East Milton and the most restaurants. We actually have some folks here who are very much part of that community. But I think, you know, and I would say that would be the liveliest, just with the circulation and all that goes on there with, whether it's a health club that we have there, which drives a lot of energy and activity and the, so I would say.
It's the largest.
The strongest in the liveliest, I would.
It's the largest, which allows for the more variety in the types of businesses, I would say, right? I think there's opportunity in other districts like Central Ave and Lower Mills that's untapped. You know, having no one central business district, it has been something that's been talked about. Certainly even when we did a master plan almost 10 years ago now, that was talked about. And this area here is where most of the town services are, near here or here. And yet, there's no other uses here. So it's not like a lot of other towns, which have sort of a downtown, where all of these things sort of coexist.
So we also have the agricultural. We have, for as close to the city as we are, we have a lot of really strong businesses that sell.
You have several nurseries?
Nurseries, yeah.
Lots of landscapers.
Lots of landscapers, yeah.
So in terms of the liveliest, are you talking about like during the day, just foot traffic being lively? Are you thinking like restaurants lively? I think how, if you define what you mean, and then tell me what.
What you mean by lively?
You know, so like going into the small hardware store. You know, that might not, it's lively, you know? It's, I mean, I happen to like hardware stores, but, but is that, or is it just the number of people going in? I think, yeah, foot traffic. A foot traffic count, not necessarily a party atmosphere. And what you would like it to be more of? So I mean, if you see a busy intersection, that's lively, but I don't think any of us want to be stuck in traffic.
I think I've heard many people say that we have enough hair salons, nail salons, and real estate offices.
And dry cleaners.
That it would be nice to see more things where people can gather, sort of community kind of oriented, more retail oriented, I would say. That's something I think we've heard in planning.
Right. Yeah, so even, so we have a lot of nail salons, but there's a lot of foot traffic, you know, in each one. So, you know, is that way, that's what I'm trying to understand, is it just a foot traffic count? Yes, because if there are those existing thriving businesses with foot traffic, that could be somewhere we can collate, co-locate more like, you know, supplementary uses.
Yeah, so for example, for liveliness, I had a conversation with someone who works at the wine shop in Central Ave. And I, not, I don't remember how long ago the place opened up next door and they're hours.
Craft and Crew.
No, well, Craft and Crew was the wine shop, but next door is the Mexican place. And they said since that place opened, the synergy between them, people coming, can go to both establishments has increased quite a bit versus another kind of use. So in a small district, East Milton has that where there's a number of businesses, in fact, in one building, a number of businesses, where people can patronize more than one business, you know, in a, in an outing. Yeah, park once, in an outing. So some of the others, like Central Ave and Milton Village, could be more dynamic and more lively based on just the mix of uses. Some of them are more, I'd say, more office-oriented. And so it just doesn't have the same, I guess, liveliness.
Yeah, so that's what I was going to ask, too. So like in East Milton, you know, the Rockland Trust Building.
Right.
You know, that has, that has a lot of foot traffic, you know? I'm in there, I go to the dentist there, the bank there. So there's a lot of businesses in there, but again, I wouldn't consider it lively.
We have Angela on Zoom with her hand raised.
Oh, I was just going to suggest, and actually, the last few comments, this, you have been embodying this, but you know, as you're making comments, if you could attach that comment to, as you just did, you know, the wine shop and the Mexican restaurant in Central Ave for Milton Village with the bank, just so that we can try to, I'm trying to keep some notes here.
Yeah, so the one I mentioned at the beginning, the extra space storage is in Milton Village. And that's also where the hardware store is that Maggie mentioned. And there's a post office there and in East Milton Square, which does, you know, generate. People have to go and do their business there. So the other thing mentioned is the farmer's market is in Milton Village, just behind the buildings there. And in the summer months and into the fall, that generates activity, which then, if you had other uses there, you can have more liveliness, right? There's definitely some opportunity, more opportunity.
And currently, the farmer's market does not extend into winter.
Correct, yeah.
It'll finish over.
Right.
But we've also seen, we're having some, currently, some new mixed-use development projects that are going up. The Hendry Site, which is in Central Avenue, that has just recently been completed. And they've just leased out two new tenants, so that's a whole new revenue source right there that we didn't previously have. And then 440 Granite, which is East Milton, that will have a first-floor commercial, and that is under construction right now, and that will be built. So some of those will actually bring in some.
So when we think about whether the districts have been, their potential have been fully realized? My opinion is no. And it has to be carefully done to, you know, in terms of how more activity can be added, because that gets you back to one of your questions on the challenges. Because I don't know how it was for you coming here, but we definitely have traffic challenges, particularly certain times of the day. Our location, you know, next to Boston is, makes it for commuters, but also just Milton residents. And then parking, we have, you know, very small lots with very small buildings for the most part. And each one of them is difficult to park for the need. And so we've had conversations about more shared parking, you know, whether that's municipal parking or otherwise. But that's a challenge. I think businesses would say parking is a challenge. And then I think one of the things that I've heard is there's a question about whether our spending dollars, a lot of them in Milton are going to other towns and not being, because there's just a lost opportunity, you know, not having an opportunity of being able to spend it here. And so I am curious. People say that the residential tax revenue is, you know, is so much higher as a percentage than many other communities. If you think about peer communities, they have more business tax revenue. So the question is, how could we do that in a way that, you know, preserves things that people would like to see preserved? You know, I don't know that there's a large appetite or any appetite to expand the boundaries of business districts, for example. So what can we do within the districts, right? So, or is there, you know, some, we have Milton Hospital here with the closure of Carney in Dorchester. Is there some opportunity for tax revenue from medical office, and how would that work?
I think one of the greatest newer buildings, which is Elliot Physical Therapy, which actually has units, rental units above, and, or the condos above.
They're rental apartments?
Rental apartments above.
And that's in East Milton.
And that's in East Milton by the post office. And Elliot has just been a great, has really served a need in our town, and is very.
And it has great parking, so you can pull right in. Very easy to, it's an easy destination spot.
So I, and I don't know if this is in your scope, but if it somehow could be, I'd be very interested in seeing what other communities that have this challenge of small districts and small lots. that, that have this challenge of small districts and small lots, how they handle like a shared parking scenario. I think, I was talking with someone in Belmont and I think they were looking at something like that. So if you've got any data about that, that could be very interesting, I think.
And I think also thinking about convert, when, when properties come up that the town owns, that it's a conversion consideration. For example, our East Milton Fire Station is going to be relocated. That building's going to become available and would be a great opportunity for something that would be economically viable, that is very limited in parking, but.
That's where the shared parking has.
But that's, but that is, that, that's a new building that will be coming for sale or available at some point.
And also on that note, for that building in particular, to focus on the town of Milton actually owning properties and renting them out. I feel like in the past, there's been, you know, a little bit short sightedness that we're selling off our assets, when I think we should be keeping them and reimagining how they can be used. And I know, you know, maybe some staff members at town hall don't think that way, that we as a town want to become property owners and landlords. But I think there's a great opportunity for that and we should be actually having a plan to acquire more land when properties come up for sale and not be quick to dispose of it.
I think that rental idea is a really interesting one. I read an article that surprised me that Paris, France is a long way from here. But apparently the city has a concerted effort to preserve independent businesses. And so they are the landlord for a lot of the storefronts. And they, they maintain price points that they can keep that mix and keep it neighborhood and keep it local. And so, you know, that, when, when the town is the landlord, you know, it could maybe control a little bit in terms of the kind of business that would go in there. And part of it might have to do with rental rates. I've seen that in Boston, where, you know, developers will subsidize the rental, the lease rate on the first floor, because they want to make sure they attract the kind of business that would, they, they would like for the benefit of their other users in the complex or in the building or in the neighborhood.
And, and, you know, maybe the first few years, there's not a, a big return on the town's investment. But if we partner with the business and they do the build out, you know, you know, the town might not get the revenue from rent at the beginning. But we are increasing the value of the asset and then down, down the line, then if that business leaves, we have a, a nice renovated building.
Would you like to, for us to put together just a list, not right now, but of, of things that we think that the town could use? So when I go to another, like, if I'm gonna go, if I want to buy a bicycle, for example, we used to have a bike shop. We lost, we've lost that. You know, certain amenities that I think would be really nice for our town to offer, that I've seen in, you know, other communities.
I think if you did a survey, you'll get a lot of response about what people would like. Because I've seen posts on social media, someone will just put out there, hey, what, what would you like to see here? And the responses that come in are many. So it is something that people are interested in.
Because we, and we had recently lost a really wonderful gift store, the Gift Garden, which was just, everyone loved and would, you know, buy your teacher's ornaments there. It was just a real, you know, community focused experience. And there's now, we fortunately have William James that just has opened in, on Central Avenue, which meets that gift need. But that would be the type of thing that I think we could use more of.
And I think we've been lucky through the years, in my opinion, some people might not agree, to keep down the, the chains. I happen to like seeing independence as much as possible.
Good. Is that a good place to keep moving?
Did we cover this?
We did. There's a lot more I want to know about. That will definitely go into the survey and then we can work on that. And I will circulate this after because I want to get more of the thoughts. But I know that the public hearing starts at 7:00, so I'm gonna breeze through this.
That's okay. We, we put that on as the time, but it doesn't have to start right.
I think we anticipated an hour for, for this, didn't we?
Yeah.
I know it's sometimes with hearing, yeah. Exact same. Then if we have a few more minutes, I do want to touch on the challenges. A few of you mentioned that businesses have closed down or businesses cited parking as an issue. Is parking an issue for the business? Like, do businesses, are businesses saying that, like, it's hard to move into a location, maybe because they don't meet the parking requirements? Or are they saying our customers don't have anywhere to park when they come?
I think it's the latter.
Yeah. We don't know what we're, the lost opportunity. We, we do have a landlord in, in Lower Mills who owns several properties. And he has been in the market to lease space and he has been getting feedback. So I think having a conversation from him about what potential tenants are looking for and why maybe some don't locate here, like what we don't have that they would need, I think that could be really useful. And then the Chamber of Commerce may have some thoughts for you on that as well in terms of challenges that the businesses find.
Yeah, the Chamber, I think primarily though focuses on East Milton. You know, I am a member, but I don't really attend because they're not focused on businesses outside of East Milton Square, which is a bit unfortunate.
Yeah, so that, so the, the, that gets me to the point of the, there are only a few property owners in some of these areas, like Central Ave and Milton Village. So it might be easy enough to talk to a few of those property owners. And then, you know, your business, like I said earlier, outside of the business district. So having some, some way to sort of capture feedback from those businesses as well, I think would be helpful. The, the landscape businesses are all outside of the business district?
And we plan to, I'll go through the community engagement strategy. We plan to have focus groups. And I'll definitely invite recommendations of who you think we should be talking to. I did want to ask you about challenges. If we could just go around very briefly to talk about what you think are the challenges that you want this plan to address.
And just as a side note, if you have time to stay after for the public hearing, you probably will hear a lot. A lot of challenges.
So challenges that we've heard a lot about are loading and.
Delivery zones.
Delivery zones, particularly in East Milton we've heard about, but it doesn't mean that they aren't the same kind of issues elsewhere. And if you do stick around, you might see, I mentioned at our last meeting, there are neighborhoods like the North End of Boston that manage deliveries, you know, in a sort of way where they're, not every business is having a truck come in and having to do independent deliveries. And I've seen that in other cities as well. So whether that, you have any examples of how other towns are handling that? Small towns like ours, the small districts, that would be very helpful. That's, that's a.
Parking and deliveries, I would say.
It's a big concern of residents as well that we hear when streets get blocked because of a delivery happening and the vehicle doesn't have a place to go for that delivery, other than block the street or block the sidewalk. And I would say one of the challenges that, like I mentioned earlier, is just like the, the retail mix and what lost opportunities we have in terms of dollars going elsewhere. And if we could increase our business tax percentage, I think many people in town would be very happy with that, if we can do it in a reasonable way. So I know there's trade-offs to these, so I see that as a challenge. How can we do it? How can we get more of a variety in the, in the businesses? And have that, strike that balance between not being too much of a burden on the people who live in the immediate area near the businesses.
And one of the things also that we're hearing is, a lot of people feel like the, the businesses are concentrated in those districts that you've talked about heavily in East Milton, but there's a lot of people who live further on the west side, who really felt like they would love a coffee shops, you know, they would love a little market to pick things up. And I think there's a lot of opportunity. There's, it's a fairly mostly residential in that area, so it's limited. But there is a new building going up on Blue Hill Ave called the Ice House, which that will have retail space on the first floor. So I think that will be a new retail opportunity. But maybe seeing how we could meet the needs for folks who, who want to be able to walk, to get a little, to do some grocery shopping.
And then, sorry, may I just?
The potential of the gas station, I was thinking. It's called Franny's Corner, but it's, it's just a little gas station that used to be a Blue Hills power supply. Maybe there's some potential there to do something.
They're actually in the process of building that out as a little general store. So that will be, which would be great.
One thing I just wanted to point out, sorry Maggie, may I? Lower Mills, we have a, a couple of overlay districts there, mixed use. And we're, we've been working on one with your colleagues and with Josh, as you know, probably for East Milton Square. So if you have any thoughts about, you know, businesses in a mixed-use district like that, the, and how that's working in other communities, I think that would be helpful, just as for us, for our education and for residents as well.
So I know that Cheryl brought up about businesses outside of the business district. And that's, I think, where the greatest opportunity is because they have the land to do it. But you do have to be careful because you have neighbors. And so it comes down to hours of operations, it comes down to employee count and parking. And, you know, it is challenging and we all have to live by special permits. And we, it can be challenging when you're dealing with outside vendors and even inside employees. And, and, but that's where the, I think the greatest opportunity is. And it's setting up, as Jim said, like Franny's Corner, if they're looking at expanding a general store, it's really making sure that the setbacks are there. You know, and not just a five or 10-foot setback. I have a 30-foot setback on most of my property, which then I can't use it. So then I'm giving up 30 feet of unusable space.
Which is basically your showroom.
Which is, it's, it's a lot. And then you have to still pay taxes on it and you can't use it as, you know, for commercial. So there are internal things that have to be done, that we have to look at to, to help businesses that are outside of the, the business districts. But I think that's where the greatest opportunity is.
We have Angela on the screen.
I just wanted to pick up on that with kind of two points. One is, I do think the earlier discussion about parking and circulation and concerns about, you know, making manageable vehicular and we would hope multimodal ways of getting around and accessing these wonderful business and community assets and districts. There may be some way of connecting what you're commenting on about the non-conformities outside of the core districts to, to some of those thoughts. I want to urge, on the other hand, a tad bit of caution about getting into fine detail about design guidelines and things like that. We're trying to really come, come up with a more, I think, I think that is what the town was asking for and would benefit from is kind of a more cross-cutting cohesive, what is the game plan for fully realizing that economic value and potential in some of these districts. So I just want to be a little bit cautious about, you know, verifying design guidelines will be a bit, probably the next phase of the work after creating this plan. Although I'm definitely welcome, Griti, if you have any thoughts on that. Thanks.
Can I just tie two of the comments together that both Meredith and Maggie mentioned? Meredith, on the west side of town, there isn't any business district. So if we're going to address concerns that we've heard from people who live in the, in this area, then we have to look outside of those districts. And it might be some that are already business in, that are non-conforming. So it, they do kind of tie together.
Yeah, and today's the first meeting. This is something I've heard in other communities that, and I think similar communities, where all the business isn't always necessarily where you see it. Sometimes there's lots of home businesses and how do we make sure those businesses are able to like stay in the community and grow in the community? And guide it to the best location for everyone, but that's a very, I mean, everyone, as much as we can achieve that. I'm gonna move it along. So this, we didn't need this, just to, this was to contextualize the different areas of the town. Do want to give an overview of the community engagement process. This will be shaped as we move forward. You know, it's, we have a roadmap, but nothing set in stone and we welcome your guidance of how best to do this. We're going to do a survey, we're going to do focus groups. And to, to have that targeted outreach as expansive as we can. And then we do want to highlight that MAPC is a mission-driven organization. We are committed to racial equity, diversity and inclusion. This is in our statement, it's in all of our scopes. We only partner with partners who will sign on to this. So we want to have an inclusive outreach process and that means different things in different communities. It means supporting local small businesses and giving opportunity to, to everyone to enhance their circumstances. Okay, I don't know if we want to get into this because I know we're coming up on time. But I would, I will send this out and invite your feedback. As we look towards that community outreach process, we welcome you to let us know which real estate professionals, professionals, which business owners, which property owners we should be talking with. Perhaps someone's been sitting on a lot for a couple of decades and we're trying to figure out what's stopping them from developing. And what community organizations or individuals you think we should talk to. We want to make sure we reach out to them, that we are accessible to them, that they don't need to come find us. Okay.
So on that community engagement, do you, were you planning to do a survey? Okay, and were you planning to do a forum where people can come, whether it's a presentation or at least some, something for them to understand what this plan means or will?
Yes, we have two workshops, both post, after the holidays. And they will be to introduce or introduce the process, project at that point. And then also, once we start coming up with recommendations that are vetted by the planning board and to get feedback there. What they think.
Sounds good.
Just thinking, so I'm gonna take the conversation way backwards. When you talked about businesses where they're not. So I'm a general contractor and I operate out of my house. I have my truck in the driveway, I've got my tools in the garage. There are a lot of plumbers, electricians, painters doing the same thing. I know it's not going to bring retail and, and sort of merchant activity, but if there was a way to offer a guy like me the opportunity to run my business out of my house, I'd be willing to pay a few more dollars tax-wise. I don't know if I'm opening up a can of worms here or not, but it just seems like so many guys are hiding their businesses because they're afraid of their big scary truck in the driveway. It has zero impact on the neighbors, but you know, if I were to pay a couple of bucks to hang a shingle on my, outside my house, I'd definitely do that.
We have a lot of barns that can make great art studios, could have a.
Yeah, exactly.
We allow businesses at, at homes now, but they don't allow employees. So that's.
It's if you're an accountant or a lawyer.
Yeah, but if you have one employee, you can't do it, right? So, I mean, it's just something to, while you're, while we're talking about things, is to get feedback on that, for sure. I think that's a good point, Jim.
Yes.
It's a different way of getting tax revenue.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Not that I'm one for just paying more taxes, but you know what?
No, and, and we don't allow trucks with commercial plates to park in driveways. They have to be garaged. So, but then if you're a contractor, you need to have commercial plates if you want to go work in Boston.
Or you rent a space at the Pepsi plant, you drive to the Pepsi plant and get your truck. It's just kind of ridiculous. It's just kind of ridiculous. If there was a way to get around that that didn't impact the neighborhood, but somehow generated tax revenue for the town, I think that'd be a win. I just don't know how to.
Then the Pepsi plant might be something else besides a parking lot for trucks.
That's a really good example. Everybody needs the trades, especially with winter coming. I haven't even tried to turn on my heat yet. Yeah, and you need it close to your house and the same day. All right.
Not just the trades, professional office as well, accountants, lawyers, psychiatrists.
Out of, out of the home that can have client, clients are not, are probably not allowed at the moment?
I don't think you can have.
There used to be doctor's offices out of homes, I don't, but that was.
That probably operated under some special permit.
Yeah.
Marion might know.
That was.
Yes, that's how it happened.
Yeah, the doctor. Yeah. Yeah, Mary, I know, you could, it's a great deal. This is one person you should interview over here.
There were many, there were quite a few doctor's offices in homes. And it's a little murky how they were permitted. Maybe they were just allowed, maybe they were special permits. But now it's a whole different, you just can't do it now. What you do is you get Elliot Physical Therapy, you know, doing a nice renovation of a business with mixed use, small building, kind of unusual to be able to do that and make it work financially. But now we have sort of a form, at least of medical office building that's in a residential district, although it's next to the commercial. But anyway, that's the history. It used to be you, your doctor could be down the street. I think probably medical practice has changed a lot too. So, but I still think there's might be some doctors who would want to do it, so.
And it might be going back.
Yeah, I mean, I.
It's all the craziness in the hospital world.
I remember when he came with his little bag and gave us our shots, so anyway.
Thank you, and that's Marion McGettrick, if you're taking notes.
A great resource.
Thank you. All right. I think that wraps up my presentation. I welcome, any thoughts? I welcome you to reach out to me via email. I will probably via Tim or Cheyenne send these out so that you have the questions and, yeah, and then we'll take it.
That's great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Angela.
Awesome.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. That was.
Want me to unplug you?
Thank you. Now, we have, we do have 710, at 710, 10 Bassett Street. Would you, there's a very quick thing, the A and R, if, if they can go, because I think that would be very brief. And then we could have plenty of time, if that's, okay. Right, so is that okay with the board if we do that? If we move up the modification to 1459 Brush Hill Road, A and R? And Marion, if you would like to join us and sort of explain what's happening.
Thank you. I am Marion McGettrick, and I represent Susan and Arthur Murphy. The reason we're back here tonight is because of a small labeling change in the A and R plan that you approved last March. We're still before the Canton Planning Board, I don't know what the outcome of that will be. But the purpose of this meeting is just to ask you if you would approve the change, with no other changes having been made to the plan. So I have two large copies here, which you might like to take a peek at. But what you're looking at now that's different is that the right-of-way is simply, you can see the frontage for each lot. There's no label on it. The surveyor originally felt it was so confusing because he wanted to put labels on it because when the Scheller family on the other side here of Avenue A, which is a right-of-way off Brush Hill Road. When the Scheller family, why don't you take, take those copies? When they convey.
Do you want to look at that?
Several lots to DCR as a gift. And that's this lot here, and there's a lot up here. DCR did not want title to the midpoint of the way, which is the way with the right-of-way. The lots on each side of the right-of-way owned to the midpoint of the way. And so one of these lots not only owns to the midpoint of the way in front of the lot, it also owns that little stretch there, that long piece. So the, I think the surveyor was trying to identify, you know, where those came from or something. I, I thought it was confusing myself. When we went before the Canton Planning Board, their consulting engineer said he didn't like those labels. He'd never seen that done before. I thought it was a good idea to change them. But of course, you had approved the plan. So now I have to bring it back to you and ask you again if you, as a board, are willing to approve this A and R plan with this change. So this is the other big sheet for you to look at.
And it doesn't involve any like square footage adjustments or anything?
No changes of, of anything like that. In fact, there were more notes about square footage in the original plan. Again, it was kind of confusing because there were so many little bits of, of lots. They looked like lots in the right-of-way, but they aren't lots, so. Just my opinion, I'm not a surveyor, I'm not an engineer, so. But because the engineer had requested it, we made the change, and that's what you see before you.
Okay. So that was for the town Canton, okay. Any questions from?
I'm good with it.
Other members?
No, I have no questions. And I don't see a reason not to support the change from the plan as requested.
It seems consistent with our original decision. Cheyenne, is there anyone online who would like to speak to this? Put their hand up, or anyone in the, in the public who would like to come and speak? Yeah.
Nobody on there.
Come and join us? If you could just state your name and address for the record?
Carl, thank you. Carl Cummings, 50 Hammond Way Drive, Canton. I'm not really here to address the change. I'm here to address the original A and R. I sent a letter to the board, if you've got that, then you know I'll be very quick, which is, I think it was represented to the board that it was out of your hands whether to determine that Avenue A is adequate. I don't know if you made your own determination or not, but that was not a correct statement. It's been stated that Massachusetts Appeals Court had determined in 1984 that Avenue A is adequate for subdivision. It did not. I can go into it, it's in my letter, I gave you a copy of the decision. But if you relied on that, that's a, it's bad reliance. And I just wanted to be sure that you had that in front of you for the original A and R.
Appreciate that, any questions from?
And as a follow-up, we did get a letter from Mrs. McGettrick clarifying that.
I didn't see that, what is, if I could have a minute, I'd be happy to come back.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
One thing I, I will say though, is that in terms of the material presented to us then, we did do a site walk and we did look at the recent construction, a reconstruction of the roadway and, and the length at which it was improved. And, and we do understand from the other A and Rs in that area and the time at which that that way was established. And we did make it, I, I think, I'll speak for myself. We did make a judgment that it was adequate and that it met the requirements. And so it wasn't purely one item that we relied upon, you know, to make our decision on that. So I think the rest of you agree with that.
I think Milton's criteria is slightly different from Canton, so I don't know what Canton's decision will be. I know it has to do with length of roadway, some other issues that may arise. But I think we did all, all go and see tremendous improvement because I knew, very familiar with that area and knew the roadway before the work was done. And it, and I would not have said that it was adequate at that point.
I have my own opinion on the adequacy, but I think we can all agree the statute doesn't say anything about my opinion. It doesn't really care what I think. It does care about your opinion, and in the approval, all it said was Avenue A is adequate. And I couldn't tell from that whether that represented an independent determination or whether it reflected the representation that it had already been determined adequate by Massachusetts Appeals Court. If it was the former, then you've made that decision, I don't agree, but there it is. If it was the latter, that's, that's not correct, it does not mean that's the issue at all, so.
Thank you very much.
That's for you, and I'm sorry that I didn't have enough time to mail it to you, so I'll be looking to you tonight, thank you.
So Marion, if you, how would you like this motion to be made?
I think it would simply be similar to your original motion, which is a motion to approve the A and R plan dated with the correct date, because this is an updated plan. And, you know, usually with A and R decisions, you don't have a written decision. But if you want to say that you, the only change in this plan from one you approved in March was X, Y and Z, you could say that. You can have a comment, it's up to you. The Mylar plan is in the planning office. And you will need, if you decide to approve it, to authorize the town planner to sign the plan. I, I do want to add, because this issue came up about the case. One of the things that happens to me is that I've dealt with the number of properties in this area, and I've been before the planning board a number of times, and I have discussed that particular Piper case. Sorry, is that the reference? I don't have it in front of me anyway. Pope, I'm sorry, the Pope, the Pope case, a number of times with the planning board, and sometimes at more length and sometimes at less length. We did at one point discuss the fact that, what, as I explained in my letter, that this is an appeals court decision which simply affirms the ability to use the law. The reason the appeals court made their decision is different than the reason the Superior Court did. And the Superior Court decision is very hard to find, but you have it in your archives. So that's why I just, I just gave it to the gentleman who was here. And it's not a binding precedent, and neither really is, is the appeals court decision. But the appeal, the Superior Court decision discusses the criteria for finding a way adequate and went through the, you know, the things that you look at and you're looking at today and found that that part of Avenue A, in the opinion of that judge, was adequate. So that's the reason it was offered to the planning board. But I know it can be very confusing and it might sound like a more powerful precedent than it was. I don't believe we presented it that way to you. Anyway, that's clarification for everybody. So we're just looking for a vote to approve the plan before you today, which has been changed very slightly from the one that was given to you in March 2024.
So, sure, I will make a motion to authorize the Director of Planning and Community Development to endorse the proposed division of land for 1439 Brush Hill Road as not requiring subdivision approval with a plan currently dated September 9th, 2024, which is revised from our approval in March of 2024. That's good for you.
Sounds fine to me.
Fantastic, second.
Okay, I'll, well, actually, yeah, all in favor? Thank you.
And did you, do you need to authorize the town planner to sign?
I think you did authorize town.
Did you say that?
Okay. And authorized him to sign it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I think they have the Mylar copy.
Mylar's in the office. I would like one of these back.
We can leave one for Tim.
I think if you leave one paper copy, it means you have a copy.
Right, yeah, I'll, I'll drop it in the office, okay. Thank you, okay. Thank you, and. Thank you to the 10 Bassett folks for letting me come first. Okay, so at this time, we can now reopen the public hearing for 10 Bassett Street Site Plan Approval Amendment Continued from September 26th. Join us? And you can grab that microphone too, if you both want to. Have one, yeah. Another chair sitting around.
We also have Mr. McNosa on Zoom, if you'd like me to promote him.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening, yes.
Michael Moristino representing Michael McNosa and Mark McNosa, the trustees of the Antwerp Street Realty Trust. And we're here tonight to answer whatever questions you have. I thought I can take the opportunity to try to answer some of the questions that were sent to us in the interim. I know that Cheryl had sent out an email requesting some information. And in our response to it is that she had wanted the photometric plan of the parking lot from 2018, including where fixtures are located and how this circulate. We, we have that photometric plan showing where the fixtures were located. We submitted a letter from the electrician for the Milton Marketplace, Charles E. Gerrier, JSI Electrical Contractors, stating that he had serviced the parking lights and layout of the marketplace for many years. There's been no changes to the scheme of the parking lot lights since installed on October 7th, 2018. Fixtures, the question was asked, can fixtures be turned off at different times? And they can be, and it can be, they can be left on in certain areas. There's additional zones that can be added as well, so it's pretty flexible. The, the next area was the questions about the site plan. We, we have given you a parking plan. I apologize for taking so long. And I, I started asking for it after the last meeting and it took us a while to get it. And I got it today and I filed it here. And we did send you an electronic copy. So it, we had, it was indicated by Cheryl that we should include the location and sizes of the trash compactor, the compost areas, recycling, keg storage area, delivery areas, and all dedicated parking areas for specific uses. So we did that as much as we could on, on the plan. I noticed that there were some things missing on there. Specifically, the, the size of the compactor and the size of the compost area, that was not, that was not given. But he did give us everything else that we were looking for, including the location of the, of the keg area, the keg storage area and the front entrance to the store. As far as, there was another question about the removal of one parking space at the bottom of the stairs to make ingress and egress more generous. My, my client's thought about that, I think he's had some communications with some of the members. And he would prefer that the six-foot area at the base of the stairway be extended for another three feet and, and not like a whole parking space. And he has some reasons for that, and he can certainly explain that. In terms of some other issues that were asked of us, it was requested that we get a confirmation from the Health Department or the Building Department, that trash can be stored in the food center kitchen on the second floor area. We did get an email from the Health Department, I did file it with the materials that I sent in. And, and they did say that it was permissible, as long as it was done cleanly and making sure that there were no rodents and things like that that might get in the area.
Is that, can I just, is that trash or just recycling or both?
Both. As long as the barrels have lids and they're sealed.
The next area was, it was requested that we provided a list of vendors which we have and asked for the frequencies of deliveries in products associated with each vendor and truck sizes. Well, we did provide a list of the vendors fairly detailed, but we couldn't give any exact times that they, they come there. We tried and we really can't get it because it's somewhere in that timeframe of eight o'clock in the morning to six o'clock at night, and it varies. I've previously provided truck sizes as best I can, which is 16 to 37 feet in length. And there's some smaller vans that make deliveries as well. I was also asked to look at the issue of the odor control and information about the precipitator. Were we going to use the precipitator or another piece of equipment? And there was some discussion about the precipitator. Michael gave a good description of the Airmaid Commercial Ventilation System. It was attached to the materials that we sent in, and it's kind of in layman's terms as to how it works. And based upon the recommendation of the kitchen consultant, Ed Smith, who's the kitchen consultant for Vance, Vance Welch, the company that services the tenants' restaurant equipment, and also the company that services their tenant's restaurant equipment recommendation, they decided to go with the Airmaid system. The applicant owner researched the units and felt that the Airmaid Commercial Ventilators was a better system and was much more reliable. I think I saw a percentage of like 95% reliability. My client is aware that the neighbors have complained about smells from the building, and they believe that the Airmaid system will work much better in the end. In terms of, and I'm certainly willing to answer any questions about those issues, but I can move on to the next item if you'd like.
Can I just ask on the, on the kitchen exhaust?
Sure.
I read the memo, and you mentioned now Ed Smith. Did Ed Smith write that memo describing how that would work, the Airmaid system would work?
He did not.
No, I didn't.
Oh, you did, okay.
I did a lot of kind of research online, and so it's. So I did a lot of kind of research online, and so it's, it's somewhat technical. But I, as best I could, put in layman's terms from all the information that I had. So that actually I could understand it myself, to be honest, but also so it would be more relatable to the board as well.
So, just so residents, neighbors understand, that's not a piece of equipment that you currently have and the plate had previously.
It is not. So we are, we are looking to obviously address our odor issues as well in the marketplace. So, which is a different system. It's our, our hood system's much newer and larger than the plate, the old plate system, which is much older and smaller. So I did reach out to a couple of people in the last couple of days. I'm hoping that someone would come out and look at our system. The Airmaid System might work for us as well. It may not. But I do want to have someone, a professional, come out and just see what it looks like and what might be best for us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Piggybacking on that, when they come out and look at it, and I'm sure they're going to tell you this, but if the Airmaid filters 1,000 CFM per minute and your fan is moving 1,500, it's not going to meet its intended purpose. So just make sure everything is sized to handle the volume of air you're moving.
Yeah, and that's my concern too. Again, ours is much bigger than the one next door, so.
Okay, so you have the potential to put one of these in at the plate and maybe replace the one at Fruit Center. Not that we're making you do that, but that's where you're going with this possibly?
Filters now that we, that we use and change. You know, one of the things we've been messing around with lately is just changing them more often. Typically, we change our filters every four to six weeks, so we're going to move down to two weeks to see if that makes a difference. But in the meantime, it's, it's time that we kind of investigate something a little bit more heavy duty, I guess you could say.
Very reasonable. Thank you.
If I may, so another question was asked about the parking. When, if we shut down the parking in the back area there, we'd only have 102 spaces left, and we'd lose 88 spaces. And we've confirmed that there's 190 spaces there. It wasn't easy. Took a lot of counting to do, and it took the, the surveyor to come out there and look at it. But we're satisfied that it's 190 spaces. So it was asked, if the rear parking lot is closed at 7:00 or 8:00 p.m., there'll be 88 less parking spaces available leaving 102. How many employees are expected to park in front of the 100, in the front 102-space lot from 8:00 p.m. to closing? So my response to that was, if I estimate that there were employees of, say, 10 to 15 employees at night, which is a little high, particularly getting later into the night. So if we call it 15 employees, and they all need a parking space, which is unusual because sometimes they take public transportation, sometimes they, they drive with other people. We would have 87 spaces available if you take away that 15. And the normal ratio, as I understand it, is 2.5 people for every parking space. But, but the way I computed it was, I just called it two, two spaces, two people for every parking space. And that would require a total of 50 parking spaces. So now, now we have a maximum parking spaces would be 65 between the employees and the customers, and that's at the maximum level. That assumes the maximum seating of 99, which is very unlikely at that hour of the night to have that many people there. So the point is that I think that there'd be plenty of parking notwithstanding shutting down and taking away those 88 parking spaces. So if there's any questions about that, we'd be glad to answer it.
Does that take into account the CVS customers as well?
It, it doesn't, but I, I would estimate that CVS, particularly at night, there's not that many customers there. You might be talking about another five or six spaces at the most. And it certainly, it's, it's in flux, I think. It changes from moment to moment. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I don't know why they even stay open after eight o'clock, but that's a corporate decision, so there are very few CVS customers after 8:00 p.m.
One of the reasons that I asked about that is also to try and, and think about the, the neighbors on Antwerp. You know, there's some other parking spaces that are close by there too. Particularly about, what is that? The eight spaces up against the one property and a few spaces next to it. I don't know how easy it is to sort of subdivide those off, but.
I think it'd be pretty easy because I looked at that myself. So I kind of drew a green line of the spaces we could still afford to lose and still have enough spaces to do what we need to do. Again, the restaurants, the only thing that's going to be open after seven o'clock. We could still cone off or block off all of these spaces and still have plenty of parking. And this, of course, also does not include the town lot up top there, which, so, so we have plenty of our own parking, even if we eliminate these spots as far as being options for customers.
So how many are you pointing to there, Mike?
I could hand this.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's in here, right?
Next to that first Antwerp.
So I'm going to send you mixed signals here, but my original intent was to allow parking here because the lights would shine into the highway and away from neighbors and into the dry cleaner.
Sure.
And really come down hard on these and all of these.
Well, this is part of the plan anyways. This is, this we're going to.
Yeah, I get it. We'll close it from here back.
Yeah, and we could totally do this.
Yeah, those are the ones that.
We could extend it even more if we wanted to. So if you do the math, I think we still have plenty of parking to do that.
Well, and that brings me to, if you close, as has a couple of residents have suggested, the Antwerp, you know, entrance exit after you close down the Fruit Center.
We can do that to our fire chief. We can cone that off as well. Can still get through there with cones, so it's, it's a non-issue.
Okay, so if, if you could ask those officials to send us an email or do an email confirming that?
From the fire chief that I forgot to forward to him, but I could forward to you guys.
Okay, that's great.
Yes, so I went through all of your permits. And it is interesting because back in 1982, one of the conditions was to have your trash collected in internal storage containers. So, so that was allowed. So I thought that was kind of interesting. And I also found it interesting that they allowed your employees to come an hour before opening and remain an hour after closing. So I think that was sort of one of my concerns, is when really is the first person going to be there to the last? And back in 1982, they contemplated that and allowed for that. So I thought that was pretty interesting. So in, you know, most of your permits were, were just the expansion of hours. You know, it was really kind of confusing because you had the market, the meat market, the fish market. They all had different hours of operations, and I think eventually it became more streamlined. And I think that was good for everybody. And at one point, the second floor wasn't even allowed to be open on Sundays. So I think that was, you know, all good. And the one thing, though, when you're parking back in 2004 was they made a one-hour parking restriction in your lot. And they allowed your parking lot to be available for all shoppers in the square. And especially, they called out Fitness Unlimited for particular hours between 5:30 and 9:00 a.m. and then 7:00 and 9:00 p.m. So I think you, you have the most parking, and I feel badly picking on you for your parking because everybody relies on you for your parking, and that is a little bit unfair. But your permit allows other people to park there. So I think we do have to remember that and keep that into consideration, that you don't really have 102 parking spots available. And my question is, how are you going to monitor the one-hour parking restriction at a restaurant?
So we, as you know, act as a municipal parking lot for the square. So that one-hour parking has been in place. Actually, I think my dad made that agreement with the town when he actually purchased the land.
He did.
So that's always been in place. We don't enforce one hour. I shouldn't say that because I don't want people parking there more than one hour, but, but we don't. We let people park for two or three hours. After four, we consider towing. So we do monitor the lot. Our security guys write down license plates, times, et cetera. Patrol the lot, and then when a car's been there for, you know, multiple hours, they might get one of our tickets. And if they're not gone after four hours, we'll consider towing. We don't like to tow. But we will do it if someone's been there for an extraordinarily long period of time. So there is a grace period there, and that's what we do now.
And I'm okay with that, but according to your permit, if we're going to follow the letter of the law of your permit, then it's a one-hour. So if you have somebody in your restaurant.
At least one hour.
Yeah. Oh, okay. I thought it was a massive one hour.
So it's at least one hour. So anyone who, anyone who patrons the square is allowed to park now parking now for at least one hour. After one hour, we have the right to expel a car from the parking lot, which we don't do after an hour.
So, so if you have at your restaurant, say, like even the former restaurants that were there, which there were actually many prior to the plate, those customers of the restaurant will be able to park for longer than one hour?
Of course.
Okay. And.
Was that ZBA or was that Planning Board here to go?
So these are all like ZBA, through the ZBA process. And again, I, in the latest one, for your hours, was 2014, when you, they expanded the hours to 6:30 a.m. for the upstairs restaurant and close at 9:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and Sunday, same 6:30, but stop, they close at 6:00 p.m. So that's a fairly recent decision. And I think that's, you know, I don't necessarily have a, a problem with starting at 6:30 because I think the people who are coming in at that hour, just a few employees prepping for the day and going back to the original permit in 1982, it allowed for employees to start prior to opening. But going through all these permits, I mean, it was really interesting, you know, and educational. And I enjoyed seeing a lot of older people's names through the years. And, but what I found was that I feel like maybe you're here a little too prematurely. And maybe you need to be going through the ZBA to clean up kind of a lot of little things. Like your baking, like no baking. And your, the pharmacy can only sell beauty and health products. And because I, again, have been through this process, and I have been asked by the town to stop selling garden furniture and certain other things. So I think you might want to go through the ZBA process and clean up some of the mess, really, you know? And, and when you're in business for so long, it just becomes a little bit messy. And I have no fault to anyone, and, you know, I support your business 100%, but I'm just, I don't want to step on anybody else's toes. And I don't want to make a situation, a messy situation even messier.
Yeah, it makes sense. It sounds like there needs to be some cleaning.
Because I think one thing that we'll have to, which is, I also noted is, it calls for security 24 hours a day, 365 days a week. Obviously, you know, I don't know that that's.
Was that in 1982 as well?
That was 1982 as well, yeah. And I know you have security, but I think that will be an issue for neighbors wanting to be guaranteed that there would be security while, you know, until the last employee he's left, you know, to make sure that everything's safe.
You don't want to have to have a guy there 24/7, 365.
I don't know that that makes any sense, really.
Yeah, so at some point, you go to the ZBA and say, look, can we get rid of this?
So just sort of cleaning that up.
I don't think, no, I wanted to ask about the Transportation Memorandum. The Transportation Impact Regulation, I think it was called, from Vanessa and Associates, Jeff Dirk. Were you planning to go through that with us, just for the, I've read it, but just for the publics?
To just, just highlight that. I think he was going to get to it. We just hadn't gotten.
I was going to get to it.
Okay, great. That's, I just wanted to ask you about that. Okay.
Go ahead, yeah.
Can I, back to on the permit, so quickly? The, the permits are all tied to operator, right? I didn't study the language as carefully as you, but.
It were, yes.
If, if you were to sell the business, does the buyer have to come back and get a new permit, per the language? Does anyone know? Because I know Maggie's, yours is that way, and so much of the support that we've seen is tied to the way you operate the business. And if a new operator were to come in, you know, and operate the same type of business, would they be, you know, as good, you know, a friendly neighbor as you are to, to the neighbors? And so I, I don't know if that was in the permit, but it's just a question I have because it's, it's come up so much in the support letters and even in the comments, you know, that support of, of your business and this business could be tied to who's operating these businesses.
Sure, sure. It's going to, would be complicated, I think. We'd have to go through a process.
Can, can Mary?
Oh, yes, Mary, yes. This is about this, I'm just here, so I just wanted to say. So this issue comes up a lot with special permits and variances. So with a special permit, a special permit can be issued to the owner. It doesn't necessarily mean that it can be passed along, but sometimes special permits say successors and assigns. So you've read all these recently, so I'm not going to try to answer that question. But if none of the permits say successors and assigns, it's always been McNosa's family, different, you know, basically the same entity. You know, unless you want it to be able to be passed along to an entirely separate corporate owner or something like that, then you don't put in successors and assigns. That's what I can tell you about that. Now, for a variance, most of these are special permits. This was a pre-existing non-conforming use as a, as a car dealership. Then I guess it was, the car dealership was leaving, and then there was a proposal to do a big high-rise 40B. That was not popular, of course. And then this is the, this is when I think the McNosa proposal came forward. So there was a pre-existing non-conforming use. So the original permit, there may have been some variances involved, but there were certainly special permits involved because when you change a pre-existing non-conforming use to another one, you make a whole argument that, you know, it's better or the same and not, but different in terms of the type of use. It was a special permit, at least partially initially. So the special permit, again, could have been limited to the current owner. I haven't read it, I haven't recently reviewed them, so I don't know how they were written. And I'm sure you would have given that answer, and I'm sorry to get upset. But it does come up all the time with variances and special permits, so. Thank you.
Wait, wait, wait. If you don't mind. So could we condition this to be renewed every three years or every two years, or how does that work?
You, a special permit can be written that way. It's usually written that way when you want to, it might be an entirely new use. It wasn't written that way initially, I don't think, for the Fruit Center. And then sometimes you come back after three years and you say, okay, now we want it to be permanent or something like that. Yes, a special permit can be limited that way. This is, this isn't, I believe, a site plan. This is just an application to modify a site plan approval, and that is different.
That's different, right.
Although it's in the nature of a special permit, and everyone has had trouble figuring out exactly what those are.
That's, yeah, that's not us.
Yeah, so, and, and just on the, on the cleaning up old, old decisions, I've actually, haven't seen anybody do that. But, but at any point the Fruit Center wanted to, it could request that a hearing be, you know, that, that the Board of Appeals agree to have a public hearing for the purpose of cleaning up a lot of old decisions by the Board of Appeals, and then you would have to review everything. So unless, I, I don't know that there's a particular conflict here. I can see all the little issues that you're talking about. And those, those, obviously, those things happen over a long period of time.
I know, and businesses change and, you know, trends change. And I think that businesses should be able to adjust to, to certain things without having to. businesses should be able to adjust to to certain things without um having to come back. The original nineteen eighty-two, you know, that was, that was why I was a little confused, it was a variance.
Yeah, I saw that too, it's interesting, yeah.
And then um.
That's because it's partially in a residential district, yeah.
And then it was interesting, they never mentioned that it was a pre-existing non-conforming and they didn't mention, this is why all of a sudden, they didn't mention it till much later. And like, yeah, and the like years later. And I said, when did it ever become a pre-existing non-conforming?
See, I wasn't.
It wasn't mentioned at all in nineteen eighty-two.
I might have been living here, but I probably just moved here and I don't know the history that well, except that I have at, from time to time for other reasons, including when I was on the select board, reviewed some of those old ones. And one possibility is that the car dealership use lapsed. So if it lapsed, if if it stopped and it, nothing happened for more than two years, then you're dealing with a variance and that's most likely the answer, but I don't know. Yeah, you you probably do.
Well, I I knew his father and I remember all the discussions about it, I was a young lawyer at that point.
It was in twenty eleven, twenty eleven was the first time where it was, when they were renovating their bathroom, where it was considered pre-existing non-conforming.
I don't, um I I do think the Board of Appeals would be happy to hold the type of hearing you're talking about, even though nobody's ever done it.
Good idea, just trying to clean up.
Yeah, just trying to be helpful, um uh cause it is, and I I think that personally, I don't like to have um renewal dates. You know, they did not put a renewal date on this and really, the renewal would have been if you wanted a change. It is cumbersome for a business to go through a renewal process if nothing has changed. So I don't wanna put undue hardship on a business just to monitor something.
Like, and that's exactly where I was going, just some level of enforcement, so we can make sure all of these conditions are being met. And I know the building inspector eventually does that, but.
Yeah, um and I'm not saying, I think on like the Fruit Center, that's been there forever, you know, forty-two years and I don't know if they necessarily have to or should come back for renewal. But if there's a new business use that maybe that might have to be renewed.
That's what I'm thinking, there's so much unknown with a new business.
But I would hate to tie that new business use to like an existing use that's been around.
Well, this is the third restaurant operator, is that right? What, I know the, there was a restaurant before the plate.
I think it's four.
Four, four.
Cause we had someone run the restaurant prior to us taking over the restaurant and I forget the name of the restaurant.
The Gallery.
The Gallery.
The Gallery, and it was Light Affair, then it was Marketplace Cafe, then it was The Plate, it was uh, but we ran it when it was Light Affair and Marketplace Cafe.
Okay, so if, yeah, sorry, no, go ahead. Do you have another question? Cause we'll let.
Keep going.
One of the other things that was asked by Tim, uh he said that the issue of whether or not we need zoning relief and amendment severances would be brought up and be prepared to have that discussion. So I I did write a letter about that, uh it's probably in your package. And I would agree that the last decision about time of uh opening was in that decision from November twenty-fourth of two thousand and fourteen. And that call for six thirty in the morning until nine o'clock at night on Monday through Saturday. And then on Sunday, it would be six thirty in the morning until six PM. So obviously, I think that needs to be subject of a variance to change the hours. And the reality is that I've looked at the hours and if we get the hours that they were looking for, it's gonna be less hours than what's was awarded or granted in two thousand and fourteen. Because that was like fourteen and a half hours per, you know, that it would be open. It's never gonna be that much with the, with the restaurant, if the restaurant goes in there, it's gonna be more like eleven and a half to twelve hours. So it'd be, it'd be less time, but clearly there'd be relief that would be needed from the zoning board of appeals.
So should we even be discussing hours of operation?
I think we can, um uh when we get to that point and in hearing from neighbors and what they're looking for.
Impacts to neighbors are directly tied to hours of operation. So I think um you know, the fact that whether, I mean, they have to go to the the Board of Appeal, you're saying, um and I guess.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah.
But I think we, they can take our feedback and um.
Make their decision.
And make their decision, having heard, have you had a chance to meet with the neighbors?
We um, on Tuesday night, we actually invited all the abouters.
On the eighth.
To uh to Abbey Park.
Were were hours of operation discussed at all?
Okay. So even though you're saying that your hours of operation are going to be reduced, they're going to be increased at at into the night. Yes, it doesn't.
The issue.
I don't think it necessarily matters that the overall hours are reduced, it's the, the impact of those hours are being increased.
The real impact is, I feel the real impact is people leaving at night, going down those stairs at ten o'clock or, you know, just feeling a little lively, maybe making a little more noise than they normally would. Getting into their car, starting a car when the parking lot's quiet, driving away. Not in the winter, it's not that big of a deal, but in the summertime with people in their backyards, that's what I'm struggling with. I think you're gonna handle the loading dock and the vendors and everything else, I think you're gonna do great. I'm just having a hard time with the impact on the neighbors, that's, I'm just, that's what I'm working through. Not looking for an answer right now, but just, that's what I'm struggling with.
No, it's it's understandable and I know that the uh family would do all that they could to protect the neighbors and
Of course.
We wanna do that, to shut down that back parking lot, to shut the lights off, to do whatever we can do to help them to maybe the Interop Street thing, working on that so that people can't, you know, take a right-hand turn onto that street. So wha- whatever can be done to help the neighbors, uh my client wants to do it. I was also asked to do an employee count per shift, I think Margaret had requested that. So I I've submitted that, it talks about uh how many people on the average would be working in the stores upstairs and how many people would be working in the market in the morning or in the afternoon. And then we asked uh Mr. Welsh to give us an idea of what he would require for uh employees and I I've listed all that. So it'd give you an idea if you needed to know how many people are going to be in the building at any, at one time.
Right, and I know you said you encourage people to take public transportation. But I I don't think that really happens, you know, I encourage my employees to take transportation and they don't.
But a lot of people just don't drive.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, so which is kinda nice, actually.
Yeah, no, it is nice. So if you total up all the employee, the worst-case scenario, I just always plan for worst-case scenarios. You have like seventy-nine employees between um, so you take the the five employees from the upstairs, the two with the queue, the three at the nutshell, that's five. And then you take worst-case scenario of forty-nine from uh the Fruit Center and twenty-five for the new restaurant.
I I don't see twenty-five anywhere, it's.
Oh, I took the five employees at night, I mean, the fifteen employees at night.
Okay, yeah, it's ten to fifteen.
And then ten employees at Sunday brunch. So I guess that that wouldn't be, so maybe that would be fif-
Oh, fifteen, but you're also not accounting for CVS in here, right?
Actually, you know what, I forgot CVS and I realized that earlier today.
It's alright, it's alright.
It's probably, uh my guess about CVS is usually three pharmacists, three people from the pharmacy-ish. There's probably maybe s- eight employees in CVS, ten employees in CVS.
So even if we just say seventy-five employees, the worst case, set up for the whole entire the worst case, that, so when you're saying you have how many spots, hundred and?
One ninety.
One ninety.
You're losing.
And then you're losing.
But you wouldn't be losing them when all of those people are working because those businesses are closed. You're talking about closing the lot after those businesses are closed, except the handful that was CVS, I understand, which could park up front, right? So I think you're talking about during, if you were talking about during the day, it'd be hundred and ninety minus the seventy-five. So leave you a hundred and fifteen for the rest of the businesses. So I mean, I think it's good to have the numbers, but I I do think that the 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 count seems adequate and that it's part of the re- the Vanessa report as well.
That's why I did say that you provide a lot of parking.
Right.
But it's just being aware of it's going to be.
Well, I think as they said, like the holidays and particularly busy days, it's gonna be a challenge, right? But those are not every day.
Yeah.
And what's gonna be the challenge, I think, is when, when Abbey Park in Navara lose for Franklin Street. I think that's gonna be a tremendous impact to the whole entire area, which.
Speaking of that, I asked about that last meeting and someone emailed me and said they checked the websites for the restaurants and didn't see where it said where to park. So I would like to revisit that um at a certain point.
Yeah. For Abbey Park in Navara, not.
Yes.
Sure.
Not for you, you know, okay, alright.
Yeah, because those, those restaurants are going to go to the municipal lot.
Right.
So then the municipal lot will not be available.
That's why I'm I'm excluding municipal lot in this completely.
And then they're gonna, because it's allowed, they're gonna go into your lot.
For an hour.
For an hour.
In that case, we'll kick them out after that, there you go.
I was asked to uh present the hours of operation uh for Ten Bassett LLC doing business in Isma Bella Kitchen and Bar. And that indicates that lunch would be from eleven AM to three PM. Dinner on Sunday through Thursday would be from three PM to nine PM, food service would stop at nine. Last call would be at ten, all customers out by ten thirty. Uh on Friday and Saturday nights, the three o'clock to ten o'clock dinnertime, food service would stop at nine thirty. Last call at ten thirty, all customers out by eleven, so that's been pushed back for an hour. Mr. Welsh felt that he could do that and he agreed to to that number. And then on Saturday and Sunday, uh eleven AM until three PM for the brunch. So those are the hours for now that we're present presenting to you. There could be some deviations from that going forward.
Just eleven o'clock seems late, the last person leaving at eleven.
Cause then really, your last employee wouldn't be leaving until midnight.
Yeah, the difficulty with that, that it's only Friday and Saturday, it's not all the other days. And uh it's difficult to to run a restaurant, as I understand it, unless you can stay open for a bit and let people have their dinner and a drink or or whatever and and I think if if we pushed it any further, it would be difficult for the operator to to go forward on it.
I know it is difficult, uh cause I live it. You know, I can't load anybody um who comes into my nursery until ten on Sunday and I have to stop at three PM on Sunday. And I can't do any firewood deliveries on Sunday. So I understand the difficulties, um but I also understand that sometimes to be in a neighborhood, you have to make concessions. I didn't wanna make those concessions.
Yes.
I think it was stated um at one of the prior meetings that really the food service drops off at nine. So the idea of staying open at nine thirty, I guess we could talk about, right? One thing I will point out is the um Sunday, it does stop at three. Right, so all um operations for the restaurant are at three and then the Fruit Center's still open till seven on Sundays, right?
Also, we had uh discussed some other things like a list of the uh hours of operation for the restaurants in East Milton Square. In in all of Milton, there's eleven restaurants in East Milton Square alone, according to the list that I submitted. And the the hours are somewhat similar to what my uh Mr. Welsh is asking for and I just wanted to point that out. In terms of.
Most of those restaurants don't back up to residential neighborhoods though, right?
Understood, understood.
Once again.
So the only other restaurant in Milton that's in a residential neighborhood, I believe, is Newcombs.
Newcom Farms.
Yeah.
Well, the um, the one at Idiot Wharf is underneath the residences, I mean, there's residences above, so.
But is that in a commercial district though?
It's in a mixed-use overlay.
Yeah, but wasn't that there when those people bought those condos, so they knew what they were getting?
Part of the permit, they got the condos to, because of the restaurant.
Yeah, I mean, you could sort of say that about people who buy their homes recently, I asked Mike how many of his neighbors have changed over in the time that they've operated and a number of them have, so.
Yeah, but there wasn't a second-floor bar three weeks ago. I mean, that's the issue.
But you know, i- i- it's still, it uh it is against the businesses, I I understand what you're saying, for sure.
There there was some discussion before about there being two bars, there aren't two bars and I just wanna make sure everyone understands that.
Well, we we, when we did the site walk with Mike, um we said on the side that was the plate.
Yeah.
If you were there and you ordered a glass of wine at lunchtime, it would come from the other side. You have to cross the the cer- the common circulation path with, the waitstaff would have to cross it with the glass of wine or the beer or whatever is served.
Yeah, the waitstaff would have to do that.
So um it it is something I think that people express concern about, so whether, when you say two bars, it it might actually be beneficial to have at least a small bar on the other side so that, I think it was suggested that maybe the one side be closed off during the day when the other businesses are open. And we've been told it's not as busy as it's time anyway because it's before dinner. And that way it would allow for uh not this crossing of of alcohol and other users, right?
Or the whole bar on the other side. So if you swatch, switch, right now the bar is over the roof and it's got the accordion windows and my fear is all the noise that comes with the bar. If you put the bar inside, but the restaurant seating outside, it would make it would be, I think it would be less impactful on the neighbors because it'd be less noise billowing out those windows. I mean, it's probably gonna be very expensive, I know you're looking at me like I'm crazy, but I mean, that might get you a later last call.
One, one thing, which, uh you know, I guess, you know, we have to look at everything. But one thing I did notice, and I I know noise is a concern, so when we were at the event the other night, when we hosted the neighbors on Tuesday night, what I did notice, cause now I'm conscious of it, is when I opened, it was really loud, it was actually a really busy night in Abbey Park. When I left Abbey Park and the door closed behind me, I really couldn't hear much at all and I was right outside the door. So I don't know that noise issue, assuming the windows are closed. Noise uh is, and I I would invite you all to be the same, on a busy night, just walk up and nice and spread. But I was surprised at how little I heard from Abbey Park and and, but I'd not thought about it before until now because it's an issue. So I don't know if noise is really gonna be a concern, there may be noise people leaving, of course, uh you know, the place. But I think while it's in operation and open and it's a restaurant and the windows are closed, I I don't see noise being that too much of an issue and and where it's located, as it's, you know, the front of the building, it's about as far away as it can be from the neighborhood and the neighbors, uh I I uh, it may not be as big a concern as as as
So my concern is, what you just said, is the outside noise when people are leaving. And you know, not to rat my kids out, but when they come home at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning and my window is open and a carload of kids are dropping off, they wake me up and I can hear them.
Are you supposed to be waiting for them anyways?
So, so I think that is the concern is.
So but that's the other thing too, this restaurant isn't geared to those kids. Like this restaurant's geared towards an older crowd, they're geared, this restaurant's geared to us. And I'm not staying up till two o'clock in the morning and I'm not certainly not gonna be rowdy, so this is, this is a restaurant that's geared to an older, more mature crowd to begin with, so I think for that reason, the concern of of, you know, wild and craziness is is minimized pretty dramatically.
But isn't that the cons- that is actually reality now happening outside of you know, in the neigh- in the East Milton neighborhood, like from people leaving the existing. You know, in the neigh- in the East Milton neighborhood, like from people leaving the existing restaurants. That if you talk to the neighbors, that is the, you know, the it's. The people parking on the streets, and yours is a little bit different, cause you have the parking lot. But hanging out at their cars, you know, that I think is a reality that. The neighbors in East Milton are dealing with now.
And I haven't, but I haven't heard that complaint. I've heard a lot about deliveries and traffic and parking and Ubers, but I haven't heard anyone complain about the noise after hours. Um in the square. And I don't know if you guys have been receiving complaints about noise after hours. There's lots of other complaints, but I haven't heard that one.
Yeah, I heard that one.
Might have been your kids.
Thinking of the Uber, um how many, there was a suggestion to have some parking spaces dedicated to. Uber pickup and drop off, so that it can be kind of, I guess, known and concentrated area. How many? Maybe this is a question for Vance. How many Uber pickups, you know, are there on a, like how much overlap? Yeah, Uber Eats is what I meant, yes. But there's also people arriving by Uber, right? Like my kids, I tell them to take Uber if they're having. But uh the uh. I I'm just, you know, there, we did hear concerns about how much traffic that generates, but since this is a parking lot. You'd want to make sure that you you provide for it, right? Because you can.
Yeah, and 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 I think we discussed this a little bit, too. I think it, the challenge is. How do you get the Uber Eats drivers to park in the spots they designate for them, cause how are they gonna know that they're there? Um and also, too, when you get back to what the plate did in Uber Eats, uh my guess is that they did a lot more than this restaurant's going to do. And it was really never an issue.
Where where did you find that they that they parked, that they weren't blocking traffic?
So the the and that's the beauty of it. I never knew they were there. The only, the only reason I knew guys were there is cause they would walk in with their phones. And they would say, where's the plate? And they'd walk around us to try to figure out where the plate was. And that would happen all the time. We'd just redirect people upstairs, redirect people upstairs, so. But as far as they're being concerned with parking and traffic, uh it was really a non-issue, uh you know, as far as as far as that goes.
I actually agree with that, because they're not blocking the street. If anything, they would pull up.
In terms of uh other items, I, there's no sense going over each one of them, because you you have them and you've read them. The uh, we talked about the. Updated vendor uh delivery list, I've provided that, and it's a pretty good idea about who they are and what.
Okay, so not on the vendors. Um I mentioned at the last meeting about places like the North End. And a resident whose office is in the North End, who sees the deliveries on a regular basis, sent us a photograph and an email. Describing, I think you were sent that, right? You were, it was forwarded to you?
No, I'm sorry, what was the?
It was um showing how um the, in the North End, they use an electronic pallet. And so deliveries are uh in one location and they deliver to multiple businesses using this electronic pallet.
I did not see that.
Oh, you did not? Wow, then. Well, uh I'll get, I'll pull it up on my laptop here. Are you have it there, Jim?
Let me see if I can find it. I reorganized my email, I probably lost it.
So essentially, um they would, the trucks would deliver at our location for other businesses.
Just for the these restaurants that are in the same group, right?
Because everything's coming in the same truck. It's, they're coming to you anyway. They could just, you know, rather than um.
Electric pallet jack and driver on the corner, just with the.
We have electric pallet jacks.
I mean, this is. This is a photograph. A photograph that was sent.
Oh, yeah, that's what we used to unload all.
Right, and. You know, this describes how uh the restaurants are serviced by this kind of delivery in the North End. So, since you mentioned these um vendors.
Do they drive in the street? The the pallet jacks?
The pallet? They they probably have to, because they otherwise wouldn't be able to fit that, I think, on the narrow sidewalks in the. Wanted on the sidewalks in the North End.
You know, pounds roughly four feet wide, so.
But we'll, we can make sure this gets sent to you, so you can see it and talk. I still would like to see some follow-up with the vendors on that, because it it could make. Up that alley, right? And then, I I don't know, maybe it's down Basset and up Church, but. You know, it I s- was happened to pass through the North End today, probably late morning and. Uh on Northern, um East Milton this uh late morning. And saw the couple of trucks on Church Street, one blocking, you know, the sidewalk and one blocking the street. And if you could have a pallet coming up there instead of trucks like that, they, and I believe they were delivering to Abbey Park. So I I think maybe not everyone took me seriously last week about that.
Because it is, it's um, it's in the site plan approval. That Abbey Park in Navara were to have a loading zone. Um I I don't know what happened to that, Vance. I don't know if you wanna address. Or mer- oh, do you wanna, yeah, address um.
Just because I represented not Abbey Park for my time as a zoning attorney in Milton, but I did represent Navara. And I have reviewed their permits and and I also know the history, because I was on the select board before, you know. Navara came along. And there was supposed to be a plan developed for delivery zones.
On Adam Street specifically, it said.
Well, that was up to the town, the ti- you know, they're supposed to be talking, and they did talk to the various bus- businesses and attempted to come up with a plan. And they could not. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't do it now, that the tu- that the town in any case was. The, it's the Traffic Commission and the Select Board who decide, you know, things like, you know, where do you put the parking space? What's the duration of parking? What type of space? Is there handicapped? Is there a loading zone? And where's that going to be? And will it serve enough of the businesses? So Adam Street is an obvious location. Because, you know, you have Dunkin' Donuts across the street, you have the two restaurants, and you have, I'm sorry, three restaurants, four restaurants, five. I don't know how many, but there's a bunch along Adam Street. Um so. To the best of my knowledge, the town has never really settled where is the loading zone. So it's still a task to be, it it's certainly in the laps of all of the, all the restaurants that need to have deliveries made. But the town needs to continue that effort. So I know that goes way back. I'm sorry that it never happened.
Posted like in front of Starbucks that this is a loading zone?
That's how the town was supposed, that's what the town was supposed to do. And from one year to the next, they can change the loading zones if it's not working out. But the.
Still and Ride has a really nice, clear loading zone. It's a, they have to cross the street, but there's. They're not parking in the middle of the road, and I think that's been just a, not anything that obviously you've created, but this has been one of the biggest.
So if there's a loading zone created, it's not probably gonna be just for Navara or just for Abbey Park, since there are all those businesses. So I I mean, I would, I would just like to put my two cents in on that issue and say, yes, the town needs to, when you're talking about. Managing East Milton Square, doing, you know, trying to stimulate development, working with the businesses, I'm sure you're gonna hear about this. Um and there's always traffic and there's gonna be more traffic, so. And just to mention very briefly, briefly, another issue that you brought up at your last meeting, which was um.
Valet parking?
Valet parking. It's it's delicately worded in the permit. It says as practically reasonable, I think, or something, and there was a reason for that. Because the town has something to say about valet parking, too, and where you have your space. And if it works well, and you can see that with one parking lot going away with a new development. Valet parking is probably gonna come back. And I know it was used for a while at Navara, and then I know at some point the decision was made that. You'd, it just clu- you're cluttering up things more with your valet parking than if you didn't have it, because you have trips going back and forth. So it's there, it's, it's not in the, in your permit, the um site plan approval, I guess. Maybe there was a special permit, too, I'm not sure, but. Site plan approval, you worded it that way, and to my, best of my recollection, we went back and forth on that wording, and the reason was, we weren't, we didn't. The the, you didn't wanna say, it has to be required, because if the town says, the Traffic Commission or the Select Board says, wait a minute, we don't like the way that's working. They have something to say about that. So I would just say, um it's in play and it could be used more or less. It even could be, you know, you you could see it happening at this parking lot where there's a lot more parking. But people, for some reason, like the luxury or whatever they be, I like it when I, I mean, when I go to the doctors in Boston, I always use valet parking. I don't use it at a restaurant, but some people do. So I did wanna answer that question for you. I don't, they're not in violation. Certainly, they haven't been found to be in violation. They get inspected every year. They just got inspected by the Health Department twice. They fixed the problem. We were talking about the trash immediately upon having those pictures shown. And I think I will say with Navara, um we have a letter from a neighbor who lives right by the parking lot. And it's a pretty strong letter that says, every issue is taken care of. If we say something to them, they immediately deal with it. They check in with us. The management at Abbey at Navara, and it's the same management now with Abbey Park. Those are testimony, that's testimony to the fact that they are responsive and, just like the fruit center, will address problems. But this site's gonna be managed by the fruit center or by, you know, Magnosa Family Trust. And the restaurant has to do what they want. So you do, I mean, this is all geared the right way. Because the fruit center has to decide what it it will allow and what it can, what kinds of conditions it can set. The delivery idea is inter- it's very interesting. There's definitely, it's definitely a difficulty. I would really say that, you know, this is something to sort of put a tag on and work on. Because what is the best way of doing it? And I don't know that the fruits, that the fruit center parking lot should necessarily be burdened with. You know, being the site, but it is the only parking lot, really, so.
Well, you could look at it as a um opportunity for you. And not just do a the pallet jack, you know, that Cheryl showed, but really get like a big. Like skid steer pallet jack, which you may have. And it's electric, like I get sod delivered on on that. Yeah, so that I would think would work better than.
But can you drive those on a?
What, like a Moffett that delivers?
So. Not to expose myself, but um. You know, um like I got sod delivered today. I didn't know he was parking on the street, and he showed up and brought my pallet of sod in. And I went, where are you parking? I've got a five acres for you to, you know, but he came in and he dropped it. And then he, then he left. So I I'm sympathetic to truck drivers. And managing truck drivers, and you do it as best you can, but there's always gonna be someone who's.
And that's what we're fixing all the time. And part of the issue we have nowadays, and and the neighbors are concerned about the trucks going up and down the street, which is a legitimate concern. In the old days, we knew the drivers. They'd be the same drivers, week in, week out, and be like, hey, you know, Chuck, can you do me a favor with next time? Every week, it's a different guy. Sometimes they don't even speak English. It's so hard to manage the truck drivers. Uh and of course, there's such a shortage in drivers that it's so hard for the for the distributors to manage the truck drivers, so. That's a whole nother element, and then to get them to deliver, to know how to do that, when it's. This guy one week and two weeks from now, it's another guy, and two weeks from there, it's a totally different guy. What do you mean I have to take this thing up the street here? Well, I I it's, it's a circus now, just to get. The guys to do what we want them to do in a traditional loading zone, a traditional dock, day in and day out. And unfortunately, I don't see the truck driver or any staffing issue resolving anytime in the near future.
And now, and um to the point, uh the truck drivers are gonna take the ticket. They're just gonna take the ticket, they're going to be parking on um Franklin Street. A neighbor's gonna come out and yell at them, and they're going to say, okay, give me the ticket, I'll give it to my trucking, my boss. It it's just, it really is a challenge, and um that's, I I am sympathetic to that, but they do a very good job. The fruit center does a very good job managing the hours of, and and I think that's what we can.
And that's what I have a question on the hours, because the Friday night after we met the last um planning board meeting on Thursday. Um at nine PM, somebody sent a picture of a delivery to Abbey Park at nine PM. Parked the wrong way on, going with the reverse, you know, on the opposite, on on the Abbey Park side. So if they're get, if they get deliveries at nine PM, how do you control that?
Yeah, this this is the fruit center controlling when the delivery is.
But if you're not there, you're closed, and there's, and Vance has somebody coming at nine PM, how do you control that?
So we may not be able to control that at the moment, but certainly moving forward, like any other issue that comes up. If something, if an issue happens, there's a problem, if someone gets out of line or someone does something you're not supposed to do. Uh you you address that and make sure it doesn't happen again, essentially. And that would be our job to manage that.
Cause it's not being, there's.
Yeah, well, that, I do think there's a difference. And not to put down, I think they're doing the best they can, Abbey Park, Navara, all those other restaurants. They each have an individual operation. Navara at least has some parking lot, you know, of its own, and owns that parking lot. Here, I just think it's really an interesting application, because. This restaurant is coming into a a commercial building that already has its own system and will be a tenant. And all of those things that you're talking about actually are going to be under the control of fruit center. And I understand what you're saying. Well, you say you're gonna do it this way, but what if one of your trucks comes at nine o'clock? Well, I think you're gonna have a security guard out there, I think.
Have that, too, but but listen, I'm I'm not saying that there won't be missteps. There's always missteps. Every day, there's missteps.
And people do things wrong sometimes. Yeah.
I mean, the reason I brought this up last meeting was that we talked about this, if it's the same vehicles, the same trucks, the same companies that are gonna service. The three restaurants, they're gonna go to the food center, then they're gonna go down Basset and Church Street and go park on Church Street. It's like a half a block away. And it's a walking distance from, you know, um a very, very short distance. For many commercial districts, where a driver may have to walk that distance anyway, uh with a pallet. So I mean, I'm not an expert, I don't, I don't do this for a living, but it is one of the biggest concerns that we hear in East Milton. And it's, it seems like um maybe it is a challenge that can't be overcome. But how are they doing it in other places? They are overcoming the challenge and they're coexisting in places where it's much busier even than. East Milton, and it it it. So I I don't believe it can't be done. I.
And to add on just one more thing, because this was another thing I happened to see, was ten thirty in the morning, and there was. A Burke truck stopped in the middle of the road. The traffic was was all backed up coming from East Milton going into Quincy. And delivering to Av- it wasn't delivering to you, but it was Abbey Park's or Navara's delivery. They were going across the street. You know, so cars were stopped, letting the kegs cross over. It was, it was a mess. So, but then, I was going to, I had another appointment, I was leaving, and the, by the time I left, the the truck, the Burke truck. Um I went and did an errand, and then I see that same Burke truck that was blocking Adam Street is now blocking Granite Avenue, because then they were delivering to the liquor store. So it was like, and then that was all backed up. It was like this, they were just ma- and and they go down Mechanics Street, take a right, and I'm sure that's the regular route. But it was just, this would really solve, um I think.
Yeah, well, you're talking kind of, you're talking about the fruit center creating the loading. What you're talking about is having a loading zone at the fruit center. I would say it's something that could be explored. It's a burden on the fruit center, but there is this restaurant.
So if if a truck comes to us, delivers to us, and then has to go up the street in a pallet jack and deliver to two other restaurants. That truck is gonna be in our parking lot now for how long? And the the reason why it works so well with us is cause we get trucks in and out and in and out. We get a a significant amount of deliveries. Um day in and day out. Um and if we don't keep those trucks moving, it's happened where. Um you know, we get both loading do- doors, I mean, lo- loading docks uh full. The loading zone might have a a truck parked there, and there might be two or three trucks waiting. Up the side parking lot to deliver. Doesn't happen that often, but it does happen, and that would be my concern. If these guys are leaving their small trucks or trailer trucks in our lot to deliver up the street. How long does that take? And how do I turn these trucks over so that I can get the rest of the deliveries that we need to get? Uh to sustain our business, not to mention the shops upstairs. So there's a lot of activity in that, in that parking lot. And I think I mentioned this before, I think we have just about three hundred vendors. Um much more than even a traditional supermarket, because we deal with so many smaller vendors. And they don't come every week. Some of these guys come every few weeks, and usually they come in, the smaller ones come in small trucks or vans, and they're in and out pretty quickly, but. There is a lot of activity in that lot, and I don't know that we could be the hub for the square, um realistically.
So I'm only suggesting it for the businesses that.
Sure, but even those twelve businesses that deliver twice a week in big trucks, you know.
But they'll say, if if it's the same, there's the vendors who are coming to the fruit center. But they'll say, if, if it's the same, the vendors who are coming to the fruit center, right? So now they're not, they're going to be coming, you said, and the deliveries are not gonna be that much different. They're going to be coming, what, with another couple of pallets for the restaurant that otherwise wouldn't be coming there. But they still are going to be doing their same routes, which are still causing the problems that exist today. So if you can do with your, with this new operation, something to help ease part of the problem. You know, maybe it won't and maybe it's a loading zone on Adam Street that would ease the problem. But.
I think we need to work on that too.
That's kind of our responsibility.
All of the businesses though would have to, you know, just to put a zone there and stripe it, that still doesn't mean people are going to use it. It's up, the businesses have to be able to get their vendors to use it and enforce it in some way.
We have an enforcement officer now.
We do. I got a ticket the other day.
Doing his job.
But yeah, enforcing it and getting them accustomed to using it.
It's always the cry that there's no enforcement. And honestly, I, I, I'm only speaking about this because I was on the select board for twelve years. And so, and I heard it from this end, you, why aren't you doing it? And now that you have an enforcement officer, especially, the town needs to do it. And because there's nothing, I mean, I know the truck drivers will just pass it along and all that. But just getting stopped and, and, you know, interfered with. The loading zone's no good if it's marked and everybody else is parking in it. And that's what was happening for a while there. I think that was part of the frustration with the loading zones.
So there was a loading zone at one point.
They, we've had various loading zones marked. I honestly, I haven't, I, I tried to forget about it after I got off the slipboard. But I remember before then that we moved in around, you know, there would be one on Granite Ave, then you'd have one on Adam Street. Maybe you try to do one on the side street going down by Abbey Park, but that's a little narrower, but that's actually where a lot of trucks.
That's where the trucks park anyway and they pull halfway onto the sidewalk.
So partly you watch the behavior and you try to centralize that. And if a truck comes along and somebody's in it, either they wait or they circle. But that's if you're enforcing it. It's not an easy thing. I just wanna suggest that this application, it seems to me, and I've thought about this a lot since it started, is better than most. Because you have a system in place and you have the same vendors. And the sa, so the trucks only have to come once and they deliver to the rest, this restaurant. And they deliver to the fruit center or if they have to deliver to another business, they do. That's different from any of these other restaurants. It's true that it doesn't solve the problem of the other restaurants. This is a different restaurant. It is under the same overall management, but it's gonna have its own manager. It's gonna have its own cuisine. It's gonna have different types of foods in some cases being delivered. So my last word is, it's a difficult situation.
Thank you.
I know we've talked about a lot, but I, I thought we should talk about the memo from trans, the transportation impact evaluation from Vinesse and Associates done by Jeff Dirk. It's clear from the report that there's gonna be some additional vehicle trips as a result of a restaurant. A hundred and thirty-six additional trips on the average weekday and a hundred and seventy-two vehicle trips on a Saturday. However, with twenty-one fewer vehicle trips during the weekday morning peak hours because the restaurant will not be open. And some of his, the findings done by this individual, he indicated in consideration of the findings above, we have concluded that the project can be accommodated within the confines of the existing transportation infrastructure. When distributed over the respective peak hours, the predicted traffic volume increases are not considered significant and would not be expected to result in a significant change or an increase in motorist delays of vehicle queuing up at the driveways or along the roadways that serve the project site. And he goes on to state that when distributed over the respective peak hours, the predicted traffic volume increases are not considered significant. It would not be expected to result in a significant change increase in motorist delays of vehicle queuing at the driveways or along the roadways that serve the project site over the conditions that existed with the former restaurant. So obviously there will be some impact, but it doesn't seem to be that great. And, and the conclusion is, in consideration of these findings, we've concluded that the project can be accommodated within the confines of the existing transportation infrastructure in a safe and efficient manner. So obviously you need to read this whole report, but I just wanted to give you some highlights of it.
That's great.
So this, this firm.
Yes.
I believe this is like the third traffic analysis that they've done for us. And not once have they ever determined that any, that any increased traffic will be significant. So, so.
They do report the facts.
Right. So, and I've asked before, what do they consider significant? And he didn't have the answer to that. And I'm wondering if they've ever talked to the neighbors to find out what the neighbors consider significant. And.
So do you think it would be helpful if we brought Jeff Dirk in to a meeting to ask him questions?
Do we really? I don't know if we.
The one question I, was similar. You know, as a regular customer, sometimes the Bassett Street entrance, you know, is challenging. I'm coming from the west, not from the, where the new residential building will be. But I, I just wonder if he, he's really looked at that. How many additional cars at that Bassett Street entrance? Because it does get congested. And, you know, queue time there would, could back you up and to a different intersection. I mean, you're very close to Granite Ave and to Church Street, right? So I, I guess, you know, the, he didn't feel as if it would have significant impact that he think would have any impact would be a question. So the, you know, and then I wanted to see what the opinion would be also about closing off the Antwerp. You know, in the evenings. Is that where the delivery trucks come in, in the mornings?
No, almost everything comes in off Bassett Street.
And they come in off of Granite to Bassett?
Correct.
And so there's gonna be less traffic in the morning when those delivery, because the, of the hours of the operation are different. That's according to this report. There's less trips generated in the morning now.
So in general, I mean, again, if you remember, we've had a restaurant there for a long time and, and and if we go back to the plate in terms of what they did for volume on an average day, which was a couple hundred, I guess, or more. My argument would be that, that this would be less impactful than the plate was simply because you have fewer cars coming and going on a regular basis. Cause it's not a quick turn, at least not as quick a turn as, as it was with the plate. So I think it would be less impactful in the, in terms of the overall burden of traffic in our parking lot than, than this proposal.
I mean, I just look at it as, I'm not sure if it's worth their expense to bring them back in. I don't, I'm not sure if I would, I don't know.
I'd rather spend the money on doing a study.
I think what we want to find is what the fire department thinks about closing the off that Antwerp street.
I did, I did, I have an email from him, so I can forward that to you.
Okay.
Yeah, and my concern is just, you know, there's a statistical significance, which I think is very different than a practical significance, you know? The neighbors, where they, they're there every day and they're experiencing with it. And my struggle is that, that traffic ports generally are just, you know, estimates and estimates are off. You know, and so what happens if this estimate is totally off?
It's a best guess.
Right.
So things are best guess.
Well, just, just, because I don't know if it was stated, about twenty-one fewer vehicle trips during the midday, the weekday morning peak hour. That goes to the, what you were saying about the plate. Eighteen additional vehicle trips during the weekday midday peak hour. I'm assuming that's due to lunch. And then twelve additional vehicle trips during the weekday evening peak hour. And sixteen additional vehicle trips during the Saturday midday peak hour. And presumably most of these are coming in on Bassett Street from Bassett Street.
Yeah, most people come in from Bassett Street.
You know, and, and it says it is expected to generate a hundred and thirty-six additional vehicle trips on an average weekday. And a hundred and seventy-two additional vehicle trips on a Saturday. You know, I, I think to me that's somewhat significant.
Well, to put things in perspective, we do about two thousand transactions a day.
Okay.
So when you talk about in perspective, I don't know that it.
And then CVS does some that don't, shoppers may not be at the fruit center as well, right? And then upstairs as well.
That don't come to the fruit center. So, you know, that's on average. So just to put things in perspective.
And that's rings at the register, two thousand rings.
And what is your, what is your busiest hours, eleven to?
No, uh, you know, it's, it's very, depending on the season, it's very difficult. Obviously we have a lunch rush, we have dinner rush. The weekends vary. Saturday eleven of, you know, maybe three, four is our busiest window typically. Sunday is typically busier later, but, but that kind of ebbs and flows a little bit.
So in the recommendations, they had some recommendations. And I wanted to see what you, if you were in agreement with those recommendations and would plan to implement them. Some of them have to do with signage and directional markings on the pavement. Most of them do. But also consideration be given to providing electric vehicle charging stations and also bicycle parking.
I actually haven't read this, so, to be honest. Any of those things can be done, certainly. I've always, I've pushed back on electrical charging stations because people stay longer if there's charging stations. And I don't know that there's even really a need for it. I have an electric car. And if you have an electric car, you're charging at home. The only time you charge on the road is if you're in a jam typically and if you're traveling. So you might get someone who just wants to use the charging station, but doesn't really need to use your facilities.
They might come and buy something from you.
They may, but.
Like I would do if I'm on the road.
But instead of being in not fifteen minutes, they might be in and out in an hour. So, so I've always pushed back on charging stations for that reason. But the other things are certainly well within.
You know, in our permitting for projects now, we pretty much look for both bicycle parking and EV charging. And, you know, with a parking lot of this size, you know, I, it could, some places have a fairly high percentage, but even if you had, you know, one that served two, two parking spaces, that could be a good faith effort to address the recommendation.
Yeah, I, I think we'll certainly look at it and consider.
So is this a good time now? I think we have some folks maybe who might wanna speak.
Can I just ask a question first? A couple of, well, first of all, I just acknowledge that we received quite a few letters and emails. Both supporting the application and some expressing some concerns. And a couple of them have suggested that there's commercial tax revenue that would come from this application. And I, I'm wondering whether you anticipate that your taxes are gonna go up with this new user? Or is it just the sales taxes are gonna go up from the plate as a user? I'm not asking you to give, you know, give us any numbers, but I just want the public to understand if this is actually something that can, could be anticipated since that's what some of the comment letters have stated.
I have not given that any thought.
Okay. That if you could address that at our next meeting, that would be great.
And are you going to share any of the results that came from your meeting with the neighbors the other night?
Sure. Overall, I thought it went really well. Vance did a really nice job. He actually served a lot of food there. It was almost like a sit-down restaurant. People came in, they could order a drink. They had a couple of signature cocktails that, you know, they thought that would be appropriate for this restaurant, that people could choose from if they wanted to. And then he had three options on the menu that people could order from a fish, lamb and a chicken dish. So Amanda, I think, spoke a little bit about the concept of the restaurant and what the hope and the goal is. She did a really nice job, actually. And then everyone ate and then we had a question and answer period. And, you know, there were certainly some concerns and, and some similar concerns that had been brought up by the board. You know, one of them was courses to time. That was brought up by a couple of people. And, you know, traffic is always a concern and flow of traffic and things like that. But by and large, I thought it was a really positive meeting and everyone loved their food. So.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not concerned the food's not gonna be good and, you know, I wanna, you know, thank you for giving us the tour and indulging us as I opened up your refrigerator. But, so it is, you know, everything is clean and neat and it's, it's spotless. So no one, at least I'm not concerned about, you know, having a restaurant. I support a restaurant going in that space. You know, I, I support you and your family. I support a liquor license going into that restaurant space. But I'm kind of feeling, you know, like Jim, that I do think the bar should be, you know, in the back, not in the front. So these are just things that I'm struggling with as we, as we're moving through the process for you to think about. You know, and to consider. And, you know, we, we, we wanna support you. But we also are here to support the neighborhood and that is kind of tough. And I understand, you know, it is difficult running a business in a residential neighborhood. And we wanna get to a yes, so help us get to a yes.
So what was the feedback with the hours? What are the?
There was concerns and actually not by many, by maybe two people that, that they were concerned about it being a little bit later than they, they would be comfortable with.
Did they mention what they would be comfortable with?
Not specifically.
Should've given him a few more drinks then.
You know, and I keep going back to the, the concept because I really, I, I think this restaurant's gonna be great when it comes. But what I'm really struggling with is that it, it appears to be more of a bar than a restaurant. And the size of the bar. I think your space is absolutely beautiful. Thank you again for that tour. But I think the difference, because I'm envisioning who's gonna be coming up that elevator? The grandmothers maybe on a walker, the mothers maybe with the strollers and their babies going to buy, you know, birthday gifts and holiday gifts or christening gowns. And there's March Madness going on and, you know, everyone's there, you know, rallied around whatever team or whatever. I, I think for me, the way, the way I would be comfortable with an expansion is if you took out the bar of that beautiful area. And I think that, especially during the daytime, is really lovely space. And if you put tables in there, all tables and not, not the bar there. And then you put a bar back on the, which is the quieter side also. So if there is a bar area that would be louder, that it would be away from the neighbors, it would be away from the windows because I think it's gonna be hard to control on a beautiful summer night, that people aren't gonna wanna open those windows. It's just, that, that's the way it is. So, and then, because I'm really seeing this shared hallway, you know, walking down. And there will be waitstaff who has to go back and forth. And if I'm at the bar, I will tell you, if, if I was there and I saw a friend of mine sitting at the restaurant on the other side, I'm gonna take my glass of wine and go walk over like through the hallway. It's just, there's gonna be no way to control that. But if you have the seating in, in that one area, I think it gives, for those who are passing through during the daytime, especially the lunchtime, when the, because I have a lot of concerns for the neighbors. But I also have a lot of concerns for the current businesses that are there. I'm concerned about the level of foot traffic because if it's more of a bar, they're not gonna come during those hours. They're just not gonna drive the foot. There's not going to drive the foot traffic coming upstairs if, if it really feels like a bar. I think your, I would actually like to see the hours opened earlier and closing earlier. I think it's really important that a business who's been there for forty years and another business, that they, that they are not going to lose their business. When I was looking at the special permit, it had, you know, the, the, the plan was for fifteen thousand square feet of retail to be upstairs, and fifteen thousand to be for the marketplace downstairs, with the goal of being ten to twelve boutique shops upstairs. We really have two stores right now, and it's really a shame because we are desperate for amenities and shops and places that we can go locally and support our local businesses. I think we really need to support the queue and support the nutshell. And I think having it be, having the tables on one side, a bar area on the other, that is the way I envisioned an expansion, that will not be uncomfortable for grandmothers, young, young girls going to shop at the queue, to be walking through a bar. It, it just, to me, it's, I'm, I really am uncomfortable with, with that concept, and I'm, that's what I'm struggling with. So, if there's any way you could revisit, I can tell you I would be more likely to approve an expansion with the tables all, and the, and the beautiful space during the daytime, with that wonderful daylight coming in and late afternoon. It's, it's really beautiful, um, up there, and put your bar on the, on the backside. And away, you know, it would be further away, so it would not be making anyone who'd be shopping there uncomfortable.
If, if I could just say something, I'm not disputing anything I'm saying. But what I would say is that we should recognize that this is a small restaurant. It's ninety-nine people, ninety-nine seats. Previously, the plate had sixty-eight seat, seats available, and they also could have used the, the seating area on, on the deck, so there could be some people seated out there. You know, I don't, I, I'm getting old, so I don't know what people are doing out there these days. But, but I can tell you that, uh, I, I think the, people seem to like that bar atmosphere. And Vance wouldn't call it a bar atmosphere, he would call it a restaurant that just happens to have a, a bar in there. Everything's going to be based around the food. Based upon the demonstration that I saw the other night on Tuesday night, food is the number one priority of, of Vance's restaurants, and I think it would be the, the same thing here. And we'll have some further discussion about, you know, where it should be and where it shouldn't be. And I certainly understand your position, but, but I don't consider it to be a bar, and I know that my client doesn't consider it to be a bar.
Well, the whole room is a bar. It's a bar.
I, I, I agree with that.
And it's in a, this is different from Navarro and Abbey Park, primarily for, well, two reasons. You're crossing over a hallway where you have other customers who are using other, other items. And it's in a residential neighborhood, and that is varied, it's distinctly different. And so I think we really have to treat it differently, and that it is, um, it is more unique in many aspects because you are, you have a common hallway, which I've never seen a restaurant that has a common hallway on both sides. I don't, I mean, I, I understand, you know, open gallery, um, you know, sort of a, um, common eating areas, you know, there's shared common eating areas, but this is, this is very different. And the shops that are up there are, are very, are really wonderful spaces. So, I just want to protect those, um, the, the owners of those shops as well.
Understood.
And the only thing, I mean, it is a second floor, and that sound is going to project right across that parking lot, kind of like an open ocean. I love the arborettes that grew in. You're doing the best you can, but there's going to be noise out those windows.
Anything you want to say before we let folks speak?
I have the concerns about the crossing on the second floor. So, you've heard the, that already. I've made my points earlier. And I do hope, you, you were very responsive to our questions tonight from the last meeting, so I anticipate you'll come back to us at the next meeting. I don't think it's our intent to just have this continue, just to keep continuing, but I think there are some outstanding issues still. I'm glad to see that you've adjusted the hours. That we've talked about the parking lot, we've talked about the exit, you followed up on all of that. I, I'm really happy to see that you're thinking about the Fruit Center, some more odor control, because that's something that we've heard. So, I, I think we're, we're getting there in terms of addressing the concerns that we've heard about. And I'm hoping that, that residency, that we're working hard to see that you can continue to run a successful operation there, that, you know, everyone values. So, I think we should hear, because we still have another addenda item tonight.
So, thank you all very much for all your feedback, and we really would like to see something that works for everyone, so we're working on that. So, thank you. All right, so whoever would like to, um, come forward, and then Cheyenne, if you see people's hands up, also on Zoom, that would be great. You're still going, right? We're still going, yes, we're, for the public to speak. Oh, yeah. Okay, do you want to join us? Okay. And if you can just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Andy Demano, East Milton Neighborhood Association Board Member, and I live on Pierce Street. Just a few things. The first is, all this new information, when did it, when does it come in? And when can the public look at it? Because, you know, we've been looking for it, and it hasn't been there. So, if we could get that, you know, a little bit before the meeting, that would be helpful. When did it come?
Typically, it's been rolling in.
Even today.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, it's pretty hard to comment on something today when, you know, you work for a living, you know, and have an hour, or in sometimes fifteen minutes between your job and getting here. So, if we could get that earlier, that, that would be great.
Typically, do ask for things by Friday, the Friday before.
And if we can't get it, I don't think you should talk about it, personally, because it's not, it's not fair to, uh, to the neighbors or to anybody who's interested, pro or con. You, you don't know what you're talking about, you don't have time to review it. But, eh, fifteen employees max to run a ninety-nine-seat restaurant from scratch with wait service and bar service. I think that's low. I'd love to see a breakdown on how that works, because I think that number's higher. I don't know really the importance of that compared to, you know, what the parking is, but certainly it, it speaks to how many people are leaving later, because those are the people that are going to, you know, affect the late night. And that's, to me, that's the biggest issue, is the late night. You know, hours, you know, as Mr. Mondesino said, the plate was open a lot more hours, and I'm sure if they want to open at six-thirty and close at two, the neighbors aren't going to have a problem with that. But that's not what they want to do, obviously, so that is a sort of a moot point, in my opinion. The meeting they had, I, I was curious how many people came to that meeting, and then how was that information disseminated? I understood you had to make a reservation. It was a, I know some of Butters who didn't know about it. As a matter of fact, very few people knew about it. So, I think if you want to get a representation of what the neighbors think, it should be a little more public than, you know, invitation only almost, and certainly starting the evening off with, you know, craft cocktails and a dinner is going to skew your opinion. But if you really want to know what's, what the, what the people are thinking, I think we should have a broader meeting with the neighbors, not just this very isolated, I mean, because it's not only going to affect the director Butters, of course, it's going to affect the entire neighborhood, and, and those people were left out of that conversation, which is unfortunate.
So, the invitation didn't go through the East Milton Neighborhood Association?
No, even though I mentioned at the last meeting that we were willing to, you know, talk to them about things. We were never contacted. The East Milton Neighborhood Association was never told about this. It sort of came about at the last minute. We couldn't even let our people know our, our email list because we didn't know about it in time, so again, unfortunate.
Do you want to address this?
Just our, our director Butters, the people that are impacted the most, and the people that live, you know.
So, Church Franklin?
Churchwood Franklin, and, so both sides of the street, up and down both sides of the street. So, anyone who, who is in contact with or close to the Fruit Center and the marketplace, those are the people who are really going to be impacted by this restaurant. Someone who lives where Andy lives is not going to be impacted by this restaurant. Someone who lives, you know, five streets away is not going to be impacted by this restaurant. So, we, we wanted to target the people who are truly going to be affected by this restaurant. That's why we chose those people. So, everyone was invited. We just asked them to RSVP, so we knew they were coming. So, that's how we did it.
How many people came, actually?
Maybe twenty, yeah.
Oh, fifty-four flyers?
Correct. And then I actually spoke to some, well, I've been speaking to neighbors anyways, but, yes.
If I could just say something about that, too. I don't want to take up too much time. My client had asked me for the Butters list, and I, I obtained it from Tim, and I gave it to him, and that's what he used. There wasn't any sinister idea to exclude anybody from this process. And I, and I would also add, what Andy had to say, I disagreed with some of that because we, I, I, we were here two weeks ago for the hearing, and I had to get the parking plan at that point, and it's difficult to get a survey to get things done quickly. I had to push him and push him very hard to get it done. I got it today. That was the best I could do. And, uh, in, in terms of other issues, I was getting requests from Tim and from others the last few days to provide certain documentation, and I put it together in the last couple of days. It wasn't my choice.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, answer that. Yeah, I'm not blaming them. I understand it's a lot to do. What I'm saying is, if we don't have it ahead of time, it's, it, you know, I don't think that's fair to discuss it. And the neighbors who are watching on television or zoomed in don't have it. I, I understand it's a lot to do. And I'm not saying there was anything sinister about it at all.
Can I just ask for clarification? Are you speaking on behalf of the Neighborhood Association or on behalf of yourself tonight?
Both, yeah.
Has, when you say you're speaking for the Neighborhood Association, have you all met?
Yeah.
And you've, you've queried the membership? Like, I, I don't understand how the membership, I mean, how the Neighborhood Association, I know there's a, like, a board, or there's a...
There's a board.
Small group.
Yeah.
But how does, how do, like, the five hundred members get to put their input into?
We have a mailing, yeah, yeah. We have an emailing list in which we, we send out and ask for responses, and...
Do you encourage them to send their own emails to us?
We, we, we will be doing that, yeah, in general, you know. It's, we, we were just coming off the summer, so it was, you know, it was difficult to get together. But we have been zooming because some of our, our board members work out of town, like Sean and so forth.
I think, you know, I would encourage the membership, you know, to watch the meetings. I mean, I think we can only, we respond as much as we can to comments and, and ask for things so that we can get as, as much information as possible. And so, it's helpful to get the emails and the letters. We've received over a dozen, probably a dozen and a half. And, you know, we read them when they come in. And while, I just want to comment on this, on the materials coming in. While we always like to have it in advance, I don't know any meeting where we're not getting materials, you know, up until the meeting. And sometimes, like you've heard, we don't have a chance to digest it all. But we do our best, so we want to keep things moving. We, we try and, and get these applicants through in a thorough way, and their time is valuable, and our time, and everyone's time is valuable. And so to say we can't look at it because it didn't hit an exact deadline, doesn't seem, my experience of ten years on the board, we haven't really enforced that strongly.
Sure, heard, yeah. I know you're doing the best you can. It's just, you know, sometimes it's frustrating, things come up, and, you know, people are like, where is this going to end? Yeah, if possible.
Yeah.
You know, I guess that's where I was.
And we'll make sure all of this gets posted, like, there's everything.
Yeah, eventually it does get posted, which is good. And, you know, I would have to disagree with Mike. And saying that it's not just the director Butters who are affected by this restaurant. And I will be affected by it, and so will the whole town. I mean, it's, it's a, you know, it's a pretty big endeavor and a pretty big change to have a restaurant slash bar in a residential neighborhood. So, I think, you know, the whole, whole town is, certainly the neighborhood of East Milton would be affected. The noise at Abbey Park might, might be quieter, you know, than Navarro, but certainly Navarro is noisy at night, and you can hear it. And that's probably because they have an outside patio as well as, for, you know, some reason, people don't hang out in front of Abbey Park, but they hang out in the back parking lot and around Navarro. And that is just my personal experience of that. I know there was a, I don't know if it was a smoking area outside, but they had one of those, you know, cigarette disposal posts, which you, I guess you drop your cigarettes in before you go in, which on one hand is probably nice because it's not on a sidewalk. On the other hand, it's where people will stand and have a cigarette, you know, and come out, which is not the greatest thing. But anyhow, um, the plate, the plate numbers were, um, you know, there were only like forty-eight seats at the plate, at tops. And as far as the use in the patio, that was, if, if the weather was nice enough to be on a patio, people are on the patio. They weren't inside and vice versa. And unfortunately, you couldn't be outside too often. It was too hot out there without any, you know, enclosure. And I think that's why they enclosed it. I think that was a good thing, but that was, you know, the way it came. And guests who came to the plate were often coming from the Fruit Center, going to the nutshell, and going to the queue. We'd see it all the time, and you can probably ask those, um, shop owners how their business has changed since the plate closed and there's nothing up there. Now, I don't think anybody's going to say, well, let's go get a cocktail and something to eat, and I'll pick up a quart of milk and get a toy for a birthday party. That's not going to happen. So, the guests who came to the plate also did those other things. So, the trip numbers, I think, should reflect that idea. So, in other words, not, you know, if the plate showed three hundred people coming there, they were also already there to go to those other establishments. So, I think the, the amount of usage for this restaurant is, it can't really, it's apples and oranges between the plate, I guess.
So, Andy, was the plate ever maxed out at fifty seats? If it was a cold day and there was nobody on the deck, did you ever have fifty patrons in the seats?
Oh, yeah.
Did you ever fill the place?
Yeah, oh, definitely. You know, it wasn't every day, all the time, but sure, certainly on certain days for some reason. And as Mike says, there's no accounting for, you know, when it's going to be busy and when it wasn't. But the plate was popular and people enjoyed it, and people did stay a little bit longer than in and out. You know, they had meetings there often, and met with friends and hung out for a while. But, you know, yeah, it was full at times.
But I think the plate was permitted for sixty to seventy seats.
Yeah.
So, even though maybe you didn't have them.
Exact, I, I wasn't saying that. I was just saying what was there. And, you know, if you're comparing how the effects of the plate related to the parking and, you know, the amount of traffic, the truth is, that's where it was, no matter what. They were also, you know, I think we, we, we had hours till nine o'clock and never used them, so.
Yeah, and it makes for a better experience, just as a...
Yeah, it was a little more open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But just, if we're just going by what's permitted and we're kind of continuing with the permit, what was established, it will remain the same as or less than sixty to seventy seats as utilized by the previous restaurant. So, I would think if, um, something were, were to be approved there, it would probably be at least the same, sixty to seventy seats.
Yeah, no, my point was just, you know, the actual effect of having, impact of having only forty-eight seats versus that many. And, you know, the longer hours, you know, as Mr. Mondesino mentioned, they're important to the restaurateur, and I understand that on the weekends, but also on the flip side, that's when, you know, that's... that's when, you know, that's when more people want to, you know, hang out at their house, want quiet and, you know, want their right, you know, to peaceful enjoyment. So those two are in direct conflict, in my opinion. So the longer hours on the weekend means less of a, you know, of that peaceful time for the neighbors. And that is what we're hearing the most. You know, an older crowd, I don't, you know, who knows? If you're serving pizza, I don't know, you know, maybe that's not quite true. I don't know what an older crowd means. You know, does it mean somebody my age or does it mean somebody? You know.
Fifty-five.
In their twenties, thirties, I'm sorry. You know, so who's to say who's going to be there really? Marion mentioned that, and I think this is, this is one big one. Marion mentioned that there was a cleanup in the back parking lot after you showed those pictures of, you know, deplorable conditions in the back, which happens to be directly in front of a butters and neighbors' houses. And, you know, it was great that it was picked up and cleaned up, but that was only after you showed the pictures and made it a point. It was that way for months, if not years. I walk my dog by there all the time. We would hope, and the Neighborhood Association would hope, and the neighbors would hope, that the restaurateur would, whoever they are, would police themselves and take care of that, you know, without being backed into a corner because they're going for a new restaurant. Either way, if they say they didn't know about it or that, that, that's, you know, that's an issue. You should either know about, either they didn't know about it or they didn't care. Either way, it's not great for the neighborhood. So we were hoping that the restaurateurs, this restaurateur group would be a little more attentive to how their operation affects the neighborhood. It's really kind of simple. And I think the fact that the same restaurant group is asking for another restaurant, that, that is a little problematic, is what we're hearing.
Is it the exact same restaurant group at Novara and Abbey Park?
I would have, you would have to, I mean, Vance is going to be the general manager, I assume, and.
So I'm going to ask again because I've heard you say a couple of times what you're hearing. I really would like to understand how, who you're hearing from and how many you're hearing from.
Sure. That's easy, yeah.
And I would like for those folks to send us.
To step forward.
To step forward and send us emails. And, you know, they don't have to be long and, you know, they can just state what their concerns are so that we can address them.
Yeah.
Because I'm very, you know, sensitive to, you know, hearing directly.
Yeah, I can totally understand that. You know, a lot of people don't like to step forward for whatever reasons, that's why they contact us.
Come to a meeting like.
Yeah, no, I understand. They just have to.
Read them all out loud, you know.
Yeah, they're somewhat anonymous. Yeah, but they are posted, right? Just to be clear. The letters posted?
No, they just go to our emails.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that'd be a lot easier.
I think they should get posted after, as public record. During public hearing.
Should or do?
Tim, was he with us?
He was.
Every email. Yeah, we tend not to post the comment letters. They come in on such an irregular schedule. And on an individual basis, the sort of the workload of kind of posting those.
Right, right.
You know, we could, if people want to look at them, you know, they're available. I have a folder of them on our server. If the board is interested in posting them, we can figure out a way to create a sort of a digest. You know, it is, it is an extra amount of work to redact identifying information. But if the board is interested in doing that, we can, we can certainly, but, but all of the board members, you know, get those letters as soon as they come in. They're part of the file, they're part of the record for anyone to review. Just with a call to the office.
Okay.
Yeah, and I wouldn't be interested in posting them. I just want to hear from people, just like Cheryl. I think it's paramount that we hear from.
Yeah, that makes, that makes total sense.
Representing five hundred people and you surveyed them and you're speaking for them.
Yeah, you know, I think there's quite a few people who would have asked to, I, I think they, they connect with us and just think, you know, that is enough.
Information.
They're filtering it through.
If a neighborhood association had an official meeting and then created one letter.
Yeah.
You know, saying.
That would be ideal with consensus based on a vote.
Because my neighborhood association, that's what we do. And we take a position and we vote on it. And then, then really, we're only getting one letter and that's easier for us to read.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah. I, I mean, you know, almost everybody wants something back. So they loved what they had before and they, they want that amenity back.
I'm just curious, is it five people? Is it fifty people?
Sure, yeah, no.
And is there consensus?
Yeah.
And I, I too, like if, like Maggie said, if there's a meeting and everyone is provided with the same information, I mean, I also think it's important what information they're provided with.
Sure.
That, you know, it'd be reflective of the record.
Sure.
And.
Well, I think if you look at the, well, I can forward you the mailings. They're, they're really just informational that we get, you know, in other words, we said, here, there's a meeting tonight. You know, please attend if you want. It's on Zoom. Here's a link to the Zoom link. Here are the three, I think there's three or four major concerns that we're hearing. You know, if you want to comment or, you know, just hear what's going on. So they're really sort of as neutral and unbiased as possible, but they do mention, you know, some concerns. And I'll forward you that. And maybe if you want, we can put you on the, you know, the board on the mailing list. So you can see where we're going. But in any event, I can get, I hear what you're saying about the numbers.
Yeah.
You know, I can be making this all up. It could just be.
And again, if it's an email that's providing the factual information about the meeting, or if it's already has some concerns that someone else has expressed, I mean, if they, if they don't share those concerns, they should let you know. And if they do share them, they should let you know.
Yeah, no.
And if they have different concerns, they should let you know. Because that would be what's most helpful to us.
Yeah, no.
If you get a consensus, I think what I'm hearing is that the hours of operation is the biggest thing.
It is, yeah.
So if you could at least get a consensus from them with the hours.
What they, what they want, yeah. I mean, like I said, they, you know, the mourning the loss of an amenity and they want something filled for sure. So, you know, as much as I keep coming up with all this, you know, this seemingly negative things, it's just that, you know, we went through this process with Novaro. It was long and it was arduous. And we thought we had, you know, a reasonable sort of mitigation and we had these conditions laid out and it just hasn't worked out. So the trust is low. And it's understandably, you know, why it's low. So, you know, and all these sort of little things that get dropped either by the town or by the restaurateur all lay on the laps of, of the people in that neighborhood. And that's really not fair. And that's all we're trying to do, is to make sure we have a clean slate here. We have a chance now to not only address what may happen at the Fruit Center with what is happening now because it's the same restaurateur. So if it, if it seems like we keep going backwards, it's just, is this going to be a reflection of what happens in the future? And I know because I've had a lot of dealings with the Magnosas, that they run a tight ship over there. So that's encouraging.
So just so you know, we had asked, I had asked, I think at the last meeting, about the application itself in which the applicant was listed as restaurant operator rather than the Magnosa who.
Right.
Family, the various entities that were the recipients of the prior site plan approvals to which this is amendment of. So now that application has been amended to reflect that it's.
The same applicant.
The same applicant, which is the various Magnosa family entities. So that's the responsible party here that the permit would go to.
Sure. And, you know, Mike is an excellent grocer, you know, and he's not a restaurateur. So.
Well, he's a landlord. He's a landlord enforcing the rules over there.
I know. And Mr. Falcone's a landlord as well. So I get it. There's a lot of, yep, just, you know, crossing Ts and dotting Is. That's all this is about, so.
Thank you so much for coming and, yes. And is there anyone else from the public who would like to come forward?
Unless she dropped. I don't know. She didn't drop.
Did you see her?
I don't see her now, though.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
Ian Corso, seventy-eight Antwerp Street. And I just had some thoughts on it where for the restaurant and the, the timing of it, but also with what's going to be coming. I think I was looking forward. There's a lot of building going on that when the ninety-two units for Falcone Clark and gets going and is built, and then you have thirty-four units on Granite Ave, I think all of the restaurants, they will be very busy, including this new restaurant going in at Abbey Park. And I wasn't able to make the meeting on Tuesday night, but I got some of the information where it was a Sunday to Thursday. It was nine o'clock, food service stops. I'm assuming that's the last time, that's the last order can go in by nine PM. That's what they mean by food service stopping at that time. Last call at ten and customers out at ten thirty. But if you have a restaurant with ninety-nine people and you're doing the last call at ten o'clock, you have the waitstaff going to the bar to get the drinks made. You have people at the bar getting them made by that bartender or service bartenders. So there's no way that people are going to, some people won't even get their drink till ten thirty. So that timing seems a little off to me. The same thing with the Friday and the Saturday night. Nine thirty for the last time for a dinner order to go in. Ten thirty, you get your last call. Again, those are going to be even busier nights, and a half hour, you're not going to service all those people. So that would seem to me that the last call time would have to be backed up a little more. And even maybe the, with the, the food ordering being maybe eight thirty is the last food order going to the kitchen, you know, so that then you can get your closing closer to being on the weeknight by the ten. And even on the Friday or the Saturday, why couldn't that be back to the ten? Because this is residential versus being in the business area. So if you're coming into that wanting to do, it sounds like a great concept of the, on the restaurant, but if you're coming into a, into a residential area, then you have to be willing to pull those, that time back. And it's even, you know, it'll be busy all day even. I know they'll be having lunch there. That'll probably be a busy time as well. And I'm just, my question was also on the, I know, you know, Vance is here representing, is, what is the name of the restaurant group even? Is it, I know, my understanding is a restaurant group investors that went in on Novara. I'm not sure if they're in with Abbey Park. Is this a restaurant group? How many people? I don't know. Is it a restaurant group that's doing it versus one person?
One group.
It's a group, okay. How many are in the group?
Several.
Several, okay. So we're having a restaurant group coming in and going forward with this. So then you're, you have the factor of number of people in the group, what they're going to want, what they're going to expect. Also, you know, are they concerned about what's going on with the neighborhood and the neighbors? Where you're coming in as a business, you want to put this in, you're going for a profit. I understand that. But whereas residential, I think it has to be treated differently than it was, say, for Novara, Abbey, or any of the restaurants that are in the business district itself.
Thank you so much. Anyone else that'd like to come forward? If you could just state your name and address for the record.
I'm Elaine Hawn. I live at eighty-four Antwerp Street. I wasn't able to go to the last meetings, but I did send a letter. I want to thank Mike, who's always been an awesome, awesome neighbor. And I sent that letter. I grew up on Antwerp Street. I've lived there for fifty-six years. So I've been there way before the Fruit Center, you know, when it was woods and all of that. I did go to the meeting on Tuesday night. They did a nice presentation. They had a nice meal. Everybody who had the meal said it was wonderful. They had the chefs come out, talk about it, you know, about the food. They were very positive about it. They did mention that they were more concentrating for this restaurant, for the food, but when you look at the plan, almost fifty percent of it is a bar. And that's very disconcerting to me, being a resident. And when they started to say they, you know, in the original plans, they wanted to open to midnight, to me as a resident, and maybe I'm being cynical, but that's where they wanted to start. I don't really think that, you know, they're going to bargain and say, well, we can maybe close earlier. But you're in a residential area. And I know you guys are listening to that, that why are you talking about a restaurant but saying, well, we're going to have last call at ten thirty or ten o'clock? Close your restaurant at a certain time. Don't have to have a last call if your main concern is a restaurant. That's what you're going to have. Why are you talking about a bar having a last call? Then it's going to probably be another hour after that. I just think you're getting later and later into an evening, late night, that I don't think it's necessary. You have other places in the square that people can go to later at night. But half of it you're having is a bar. And you can't control that only maybe you want older people to come in. It's still a bar. Anybody's going to come in. That's concerning to me. The people at the meeting did talk about the woman from the nutshell was there. A few people mentioned that they would like to see maybe if they concentrated on a lunch where you're bringing more people in during the day and they can go to the shops. That would be great for them. They talked about, some people asked the question that violar, you're supposed to not serve anybody more than two drinks without having a meal. So how are you going to police that or enforce that more if you have a lot of people at the bar? How many people did you have over there watching to see how many drinks people are having? So that was questions that people asked. They did mention that they got approval from the Board of Health that they could hold like their trash overnight, so you weren't going out late at night dumping in the dumpsters or whatever. But on the, on the flip side, if you're doing it early in the morning, is that even helping the neighbors that, are you out early in the morning or later at night? So that was one thing that I noted. Another thing would be the liquor license. Does it get transferred? Is that all set, transferred from the plate?
No, they have to reapply to the slot board, yeah. Liquor license.
One thing is, again, the hours. I think you really need to say you're in a residential area. And you need to know that you're in a residential area. And really consider the residents. Start deliveries early in the morning. I'm walking my dogs. I'm up early. There's trucks in the parking lot at seven. They're doing deliveries at seven in the morning. They don't go out in the back till probably eight. You're starting early. You've got trucks coming through the town. You've got trucks coming. Not too much up and down the Antwerp Street in the morning, but they do go up the Antwerp Street. They are going up and down the Antwerp Street. And I know you can't control that. Truck drivers are going to go the way Waves tells them is the easiest, fastest way to go. The other thing was they talked about that maybe they'll start valet parking at Abbey Park and Novara's, especially when Four Franklin Street closes. But where really are they going to put those cars for valet parking? Are they going to start moving them down towards the Fruit Center? Are they going to put them on the side streets? And then when customers can't park there anymore, where are they going to be going? Are they going to be moving themselves more towards the side streets, more towards the facility right? facility right there, the parking at the Fruit Center? So you're going to get a little more overloaded maybe from other restaurants. I know they said that Rockland, they're probably going to have the employees parking there as well. I know if I was coming out late at night as an employee, I would not want to be walking over there alone. But I know they said they can use that. Maybe they'll use that for, um, the valet parking. I don't know. But just more concerned about the hours, comings and goings. Half your restaurant is a bar, but I know they want to concentrate more on the restaurant. So I'm concerned with where are people, if your restaurant's full, where are they sitting? Are they going to get a drink? Are they in the hallway? Where are they going? Where are they going to stop? Are they going to be walking around with a drink? So, and I know you guys have been talking about that. So I appreciate that. And that's it.
Thank you so much. Anyone else from the public audience? And Cheyenne, is there anyone on, or Tim now with their hands up?
I'm not seeing anyone with their hands up.
Okay. All right. So I think this is a good time because we do have another agenda item to, um, to continue the public hearing. We can have some, probably some other good information, give you all time to talk. Do you want to schedule that for our next meeting or do you feel like you might need a little bit more time to sort of look at your design?
What date is the next meeting?
It's the 24th of October.
Yeah, I, I think that's good.
And if for some reason, if you don't feel like you have new plans ready or whatever you're working on, you can always let us know and we can continue that to a time specific. So.
Thank you.
If I could have a motion to, um, to continue the public hearing to October 24th at 7:10?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much for your time. Thank you. Okay.
I'm actually going to be, um, are you awake? Away on the 24th.
Okay. Do you want to try to reschedule? We can try to. Do a different day? Do a Wednesday? Are you?
Uh, the 23rd would work for me, yeah.
Okay. Why don't we, uh, Tim, send an email to the group because I would like for you to be there.
Then we, I think we need to, we, we need to change this.
We can email, oh.
No, I think we need to do it tonight because otherwise.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Can you describe them? Actually, we would.
Guys, can you please real quick? I want to change that date.
Wednesday, the 23rd works. Cheryl just said she's not available on the 24th. Sorry. We.
We just want Cheryl. Come back in.
Sorry. Um, because we have to vote to, to move the public hearing to a certain time.
Sure.
Date. Cheryl is not available on the 24th? Could we do the 23rd? Would that work? To continue the public hearing to the 23rd?
On Wednesday, that's fine.
It's Wednesday instead of Thursday?
Okay, so I, I, you want to take everybody's, our new motion?
Yeah. So if I could have a new motion to continue the public hearing for Tendassus Street to October 23rd, Wednesday at 7:10 PM.
So moved.
Second?
I love that. It's just.
All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Jim made the motion and I seconded it. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry.
Could act quickly on that.
So there's, the Gardner School public hearing is on the 24th.
See if they can do the 23rd.
They can't.
Yeah. Can't change that.
You can't.
Let's just go back to back like animals.
We might, well, this would be just be the only item on our agenda then for the 23rd.
Well.
Except you want to be there for the 24th.
Tim, do we have Zoe still and Util on tonight?
No, we lost Util.
So I was going to suggest we do Util on the 23rd if they're available.
Couldn't we opening close Gardner on the 24th?
Yeah, but that pushes them out. In fact, they thought they needed a month anyway. Is that a month already, the 24th?
Yes.
Because I think we need, I think we need you there.
We need to get architecture, right?
Because we can't have, have, because we can't miss more than one meeting, right?
I haven't missed any. Um, I am flying, so that's my problem. It's not like I can even zoom in. Cause I'm going to be in transit at the time of, on the 24th.
Can we ask them if they, um, will postpone and we could just open it and close it?
The Gardner? We can certainly do that. Um. And then you're, I mean, you, are you talking about a meeting the following week or just the next regularly scheduled meeting?
Yeah, maybe a, a meeting the first weekend.
I was going to say, I feel like we need to have an extra meeting, um, at some point.
And that way we could, I would like to get to, through site plan approval and I don't think it's going to take that long.
Well, the other thing is you said that Util's not available on the 7th for a forum. So we could do the 7th. Um, I know it's, it's two weeks from the 14th. The 31st, I don't think people would want to do Halloween, but I mean, I'm, I'm past the point of. So they're doing Halloween. So, I mean.
The 7th would work.
So do we need three out of five for a vote or does it have to be four?
Yes. For site plan approval, you just need a majority?
All right, great. Yeah, 7th works for me.
Well, if you wanted to.
Gardner is site plan approval.
Gardner. Well, so is this.
Yeah, Nissas and Gardner. Yep.
What? How much, um, material do, or what did you anticipate covering with Gardner on the 24th?
Um, I think basically, I, I mean, it's, I mean, first of all, it's up to you all. I mean, everything except for traffic and stormwater, um, you know, since we don't yet have those peer reviews in yet.
So they were going to look at the architecture. People had asked them to look at the architecture and asked them to look at the site layout?
Yeah.
The positioning of the building on the site. So I think that's why they thought they might need time to revise that.
Well, um, if we did Tendassus and Util on the 23rd, we don't know if Util's available on the 23rd yet. But I would like to such that we don't lose Util again. I mean, they always get pushed to the end. They're sitting around. I don't know how much we pay them to sit around. But if it, they're only like probably no more than an hour, I mean, with them probably on this particular one. So I think if we set some timeframes, time limits, um.
And again, I don't know what anybody's schedule is, but I am inclined, if possible, to meet more often, but shorter.
I would love that.
It's a little bit, it depends. A little like, because I, you know, I serve on CPC and I serve on MPIC. And CPC, we have like meetings like every week coming up, I think, to review all the applications. So this particular timeframe is, you know, I really don't, I really prefer not to have a meeting every night.
Yeah. No, I, I agree.
So, but, you know, to squeeze in this part because I'm traveling that day, you know, obviously. And to the fact that we, you know, have had Util and we haven't had that.
So I think we should ask Tim to see if Util could come on the 23rd.
And then if you wanted to just open and close on the 24th and see if they could come.
On the 7th?
On the 7th.
Does that sound good? Does that sound?
Yeah, I think, I, I think the, I mean, they'll, I mean, they understand. I mean, what I heard from Zoe was that, um, you know, the material that they have is going to take more than a half an hour to present. So they do need a little bit of breathing room, um, but that they'll generally, you know, try to make themselves available for, for whatever the board tries to, you know, reschedule next. So.
You want to do the 6:30 start again?
If we just have two agenda items, I think we should be okay. But let's just don't put anything else on that agenda.
And do Util first?
But we already just, we just did 7:10.
Yeah, for the public.
But if we said that that had to be done by.
Hard stop at eight or something or 8:15?
I was going to say like, well, if it starts at seven, give it an hour. So like.
8:30.
8:15 to 8:30 and then that gives nine, at least an hour for Util, if not more.
Yep. That sound good, Tim?
Yeah, I, I think I, I, but I'll, I'll run that by them. Um, you know, if it doesn't, I'll be in touch and we'll have to figure something out. But, um, I, I think that should be okay.
And then you're going to check with, um, this, I forget the name of the daycare.
Gardner School. Yeah. I mean, I, I think. I mean, I, so the, the 24th is out, so the 24th is out. You know, if, if they have, if they have a different preference or, or a different recommendation for, you know, when they want to come in next, I'll, I'll let them know, but, um, we'll keep the 7th as, um, as the option.
Because then I was wondering if the 14th would work for Util for a public forum instead of having our regular meeting on the 14th. We'd be swapping with the 7th. That's our regular meeting, the 14th. So it's, should be on our calendars anyway.
Okay, yes. 21st.
Yep. Because if we have a meeting on the 7th. Right?
Yeah, that's, that's three in a row. All right.
That would be the three in a row that Maggie's saying we should meet more often, but.
We got it.
If we're getting into Christmas.
Well, you always run into it with Thanksgiving. I mean, and, you know, with Thanksgiving. And so, and, and maybe we will walk through as many, I don't know, for December.
Yep.
But.
So you think we'll get anybody at that forum on the 14th?
It's a week before Thanksgiving, right?
Two weeks before, it looks like.
One week before Thanksgiving. I just feel as if it doesn't hurt to get started with the conversation. People wanted to hear about the questionnaire. People wanted to hear about the scorecard. We're talking about how we could, we don't have any decisions, but at least we can start showing people what we've been doing and get their feedback on it. And as far as like having Util, I think having them with what, we haven't seen what they're going to show yet, but they're starting to look at the things that we've asked them to look at. So.
And we want to do it while Tim is, and while Tim is still with us.
Yeah, okay. Right.
Okay. So maybe that forum on the 14th, um, think about that. And Util on the 7th.
Util, we're talking about the 23rd, right?
I mean, I'm sorry, the 23rd and then the, then the, um, Gardner School on its own.
Right.
That's what happens when you get to 10:00.
Exactly.
So, so let's just, I'll be clear. So the 23rd would be Basset Street. And hopefully Util.
Yep.
The 7th would be Gardner and whatever else. And the 14th would be a forum if that works also. Those all have to be confirmed. Okay. Well, thank you and sorry about that.
Okay, great. So Tim will say.
Family wedding.
Yeah.
Do you guys have times that you want to put down for these public hearings so that we can post them?
Well, I think we have to make sure that we can do it, but the, I think it would be 7:00 o'clock or 6:30 and probably at the council and aging in the library if we can get them.
Well, I mean, like the Basset Street, for example, so that would be 7:05 here, right?
I thought we said 7:10.
We said 7:10. We said on that. So you could post that for the.
7:10 for sure.
For the 23rd. That's for sure.
Gardner Street would, Gardner.
Would have to be.
School would be on the 7th at.
7:05 probably.
7:05?
But that's still going to have to have a meeting on the 24th to just move it.
Yeah, we'll have to.
Like I said last time.
Right, we'll have to.
Be remote, right?
And I think we can do that on Zoom.
So continue at the 24th?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll have to open the public hearing and then vote to, to move it. Okay.
Um, can I just, on the site plan?
Yeah.
I think if in, if, I don't know if Tim had things he wanted to say. I did want to say a couple of things. But on the site plan review, I do think it would be good to talk about that again before Tim's departure.
That I'd like to have it.
So I'd like to figure out if we can maybe put that on the 7th. And really make sure we allot time for that. I've started to, um, make some suggestion, suggested additions to what Tim has prepared. So.
I have some.
Okay. So that's all on that, but, um, on earlier.
Get that, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I think that when I looked at it, we actually, with the framework that he put together with what we already have, I think we can do it pretty quickly.
Yeah, I just, I was pulling a few more things from what I had put into the Article One before and added the back end or put them in. So I don't have, I haven't drawn anything from any other source at the moment, but when I did that, I looked at probably three or four other towns.
And I thought what NADIC had for their standards, their design standards.
I'm sorry?
In NADIcs, if you look at that, I really liked the way they wrote their design, what they had in their design standards. And it was, and it, it included what Tim has in the, the draft basically, but even expands on it. And it's a little more specific and detailed. And I really liked.
And that's in our folder?
It's in a folder. Yeah. And it's highlighted.
Okay.
Cause they, they had a lot that they were crossing out and amending in their draft.
Okay.
If you can't find it else.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
Did Tim have anything?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Tim, on your, did you have any update that you wanted to provide?
Take that as a no.
Tim might have already signed off. He might have thought we were concluding. So. Okay. So was that a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night all. Thank you.